Good afternoon, everybody. We're sorry about a two-minute delay. We had some technical difficulties, but I'm going to call this meeting of the City Council Work Session to order here in City Council Chambers on Thursday, February 9th. It's at 2:00 23, and it's about 1:02 PM. As the manager was walking in a few minutes ago, she said that we needed to, I need to check on Hillside High. That school is currently in the middle of a situation, and so as we come to this moment, I ask that we just take a moment to think about what happened on yesterday. What is currently happening right now as we begin to conduct today's business here that we have to conduct, my heart is really heavy. And just kind of, in your own way, let us get a better world picture in our mind, a better world for our students here in Durham, particularly Hillside High at this moment, and how we can actually realize that. Madam Clerk, if you will call the robe.
Good afternoon, everyone. Mayor O'Neill.
I am here.
Mayor Protem Middleton.
I'm here.
Councilmember Caballero.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
How's it?
Councilmember Halsey Hyman.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
And Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do have a couple of announcements, one that we need to make fairly quickly as people are counting on us to be efficient and move things along. And this would be in reference to our budget retreat. Because of a conflict that we've missed, we are asking now, at this point, I think all of the council has been notified that I was going to make the ask today to move the budget retreat the first day to March 2nd. And we will also have it followed up by another budget retreat meeting on March 3rd. I don't think we need to vote on it, but we do need to have a thumbs up from all those who are in agreement. Thank you all. It's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Law. So now, I do want to tell you about, we have a very robust agenda today. All of us up here on the dais will be taking part in how we conduct this meeting today. We all have various assignments to carry out portions of this meeting. But I do want to let you all know that I've gotten a couple of phone calls from folk in the community that have been concerned about the decorum, I guess, that we are conducting ourselves in or not. And I just want to ask everybody to be conscious that how we think we may be appearing to people in the public's eye, and there are a lot of people watching us on the internet as well as in person, that that perception being rooted in one's own mind may be subject to differences in opinions as to how we appear to the public. I know all of us are hard-working public servants, and this job is by no means an easy job. And I was not quite used to people talking to me in such a manner as I have experienced being mayor. But at the same time, I also recognize, as my mother used to tell me, Elaine, your tongue is mighty sharp. You need to watch that. You need to curtail that tongue sometimes. And as a lawyer, you know, you're kind of trained to do that in a lot of instances. And as a judge, it can come off as brutal and unemotional because when you have to sentence somebody to life in prison, and you need to say that with a straight face and make sure that they understand you, that can almost come off as dismissive or emotionalist. So I've tried to be cognizant and tried to put some virtues out there every month for us to kind of think about as to how we interchange as individuals with each other and with the public at large, and to try to make sure that we remember that we are working for you all. We do work for you all. And so with that comes a certain amount of pushback, and it should. That's the beauty of our democracy. That's why I like America. That's why I like the United States. I like my city. I like all of it. So there is some pushback that comes from people that elect you. And so we have to be cognizant that some of that comes with the job. But I do want to ask my colleagues that we be mindful that how we may have people who differ with how we think or how we vote on different things, but let us not make them feel that they are being demeaned by the process of asking and pushing back. And that's a fine line on how you do that. I just want to raise it as a concern because I've gotten at least three to four phone calls about it. And I want people to, you know, be aware that the public is watching. They want us to, they want to be able to come in here and voice their concerns. And there is a certain amount of advocacy that goes on, and we too have a right to advocate for our positions. But let us do it in peace and harmony to the extent we can. We got a lot of stuff going on in Durham, and some of it's not pretty right now. And so we don't want to be in here arguing and fussing. We have bigger issues to think about as we do this job. So let's just be mindful of that. So at this point, I am going to pass it over to any of my other colleagues for any announcements that they may have this afternoon. Now, I'll look to my left first. Councilwoman Halsey Hyman.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Good afternoon to my colleagues. Good afternoon to my residents. I would just like to say that I had the honor yesterday to attend the 18th Annual Durham City Council Martin Luther King Employment Program. And our very own Wanda Page, our city manager, brought the purpose, and she did a wonderful job. And it was just really so nice to see also the young youth who are from Jordan's Orchestra, who also performed. And so it was a really nice occasion. It was my first time attending, and just wanted to say that it happened, and it was like the 18th annual, so this has been going on for a while. So it was joint city and county. And then, again, Happy Black History Month. And because of that, I wanted to just kind of spearhead and honor someone by the name of R. Ann Harris, who was the first Durham Black elected City Council member. And I'm just going to read just a little bit that was actually after he was appointed, I mean, excuse me, elected. This was reporting on his election in May, May 9, 1953, in the Carolina Times. "It finally happened after nearly a decade of fruitless attempts by several Negro candidates to obtain a seat on the Durham City Council. A Negro was last elected to serve as the governing body." And so I actually am able to stand on the heels of all of my colleagues, but definitely stand on the heels of the first Black elected City Council member. So I wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Halsey Hyman. Are there any other announcements? Councilwoman Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have submitted, a little bit after the deadline, apologies, a resolution in support of our LGBTQ community here in Durham as we deal with some really harmful legislation that's going through the North Carolina General Assembly right now. Due to the speed that this legislation is progressing, I will be asking my colleagues to suspend the rules and vote on this resolution today rather than wait until our Monday night meeting. One of these bills has already passed the Senate and is moving very quickly through the House. And I think it's important that we express our opposition to this damaging legislation and our solidarity with our LGBTQ plus community as soon as possible. So I'll be asking for that at the appropriate time later in the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Johnson. Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and colleagues. I, it's been an emotional couple of days. And I just, once again, would like to just reaffirm just my commitment and others to supporting the effort of saving lives as much as possible. And with that being said, I've sent notice to Superintendent Mubenga. And Mayor Protem Middleton has agreed to join me, and I'm sure that we can get others, hundreds of others who've already committed. It's time for us to go directly into our schools and speak with these young men of color directly. When I was teaching, I used to see the writing on the wall. And I could tell you, I could tell my students almost their life based on the trajectory that they were, you know, performing there in front of me. And I would say, hey, you are going to end up here, or you're going to end up here. However, you could end up X if you change these habits. And I'm not in the classroom anymore, and that's one of the things I miss most about it because teachers save lives. And I hope that, you know, we can lend whatever support possible. But I think it's time to get proximate, and I plan to do just that, get into these schools. I am praying for the families of those who lost or those who actually have young men or youth that are in situations where they are on the brink of doing something that doesn't value their own life. And I hope that we can start catching it well before it actually happens. With that being said, I'll also be asking the council to consider hearing a brief presentation from the folks that are running Built to Last as well. I don't know if we can do that now or later, but I'd like to invite them in to give an update on where they are, not from a departmental standpoint, but from an actual organization standpoint. And I love your support in having them come in to provide that.
Thank you so much. You have, definitely have my support on all the above. I was over at Hillside last week. I plan to try to make a visit over there real soon. I was in touch with Dr. Logan and in touch with my Ken folk, who are students at that school, and yesterday was a lot for them. A lot for all of us, and it just has to stop at this point. We've got to find a way to stop it. So I just turn to my left, let me know when and where, how I need to do whatever. Turn to my right, see if we have an announcement on this end.
I'll just add to that, that, you know, there's a child that's not going home, and it's just difficult every time. I think it goes without saying that as a council, we're supportive of the children. But I am very mindful that these issues, in a very holistic way, start from birth. And the work you can do in high school is impactful, but the work you can do from birth and prenatal is even more impactful. And there are lots of organizations in this city that do that work, and I just want to lift them up and say, like, there's Equity Before Birth. There's Durham Children's Initiative. There's, I mean, there's so many. And I think in COVID, there was a falling away of volunteers, a falling away of a lot of in-person activities that are necessary right now. And I want to call on all of the folks in our community, as our mayor once did, to say that it's time to get out here and to get, roll up your sleeves and figure out how to support these children and their families. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem.
Madam Mayor, thank you so much. Good afternoon to you, ma'am, and to my fellow honorable colleagues and to all in the chamber and who are watching or wherever you are. Madam Mayor, you have, I mean, you channeled the voice in the heart of the city as is your unique role in light of what's happened at Hillside. I'll just simply say, I want to associate myself with everything you've said and my colleagues have said, and just put this fine point on it. With all of the accolades and attention that Durham gets, whether it's DPAC or having the highest per capita PhD rate in the country, one of them, with how many companies are moving to us, with all of that stuff, which is all true, as long as our kids are killing each other, it will always be a muted celebration. This is an editorial on us big grown folk. In the final analysis, it's not those kids. This is an editorial on us. I don't know how we're going to respond to it, but this is about us in the final analysis. So as we celebrate how great our city is, it will always be a celebration with an asterisk as long as this is going on. May God bless the family of the young man who was taken from us. May God bless Hillside. May God bless our city. Madam Mayor, I have one ask of my colleagues. We know that we have been dealing with staffing and salary issues with a number of departments in the city, and we know that 911 responders are the first voice that people often hear. Not often, they are the first voice that people hear when they call, when they are facing some of the most challenging and darkest hours. I've been in communication with the North Carolina Department of Information Technology and their Legislative Liaison Office. And I'm going to ask our colleagues at the next work session to consider a resolution entitled The First Responders, The First First Responders Resolution. Other cities have taken it up. It's winding through the legislature as now, as we speak. It's a resolution to recognize the value of 911 telecommunications in their role in North Carolina public safety for responding to emergency calls from citizens of the state and dispatching those calls to first responders in the field. And I asked for unanimous consent from my colleagues to put that on our next work session agenda to look at and look at it and look at it and see if we want to add the voice and imprimatur of the city of Durham to it. Changing this long-term, there's no appropriation attached to it in the short term, but long-term, changing this designation of first responder, of 911 call-takers to first responders will put them in a position for differentiation in terms of participation in our pension plan, compensation, and I think will help us here locally as a municipality in making sure that we're staffed with the best people, best-trained people, best-compensated people. So I ask for that to be placed, to look, my colleagues to look for that for me and for it to be placed on our next work session agenda in accordance with our practices, to have something placed on a work session agenda. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You have your thumbs up on that? Yes, go ahead, Councilman.
Also, March 1st is the meeting, the convening with the Planning Commission and council members. It should be on everyone's calendar, but it's March 1st at, I believe, 6:00 PM.
So that means we have, pretty much like Ms. Wallace told me today, you all have back-to-back meetings now.
It is. Sorry about that, guys.
First, the second, and the third to carry out the people's business. All right. Thank you all. I'm going to ask Mayor Protem to carry us through our priority items. I'll come back and read through the agenda, and then it will switch back over to Mayor Protem to carry us through our pooled items, and then our other City Council folk will be jumping in on the presentations we have this afternoon, and we will move efficiently.
With your permission, Madam Mayor, good afternoon once again to everyone. I'm going to ask now, yield now to our city manager for any priority items that she may have. Good afternoon, Madam Manager.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor Protem, Madam Mayor, and members of the Durham City Council. I have only one priority item for your consideration, and it is Agenda Item Number 54, the 2023 Long Session Legislative and Advocacy Agendas, a supplemental item that has been added. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Your item is noted. At this time now, I'll yield to our city attorney for any priority items she may have. Good afternoon, Counselor.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem. The City Attorney's Office also has one priority item. I sent a memo on this to the council earlier this week. It is that at the close of all regular business today, City Council recessed a closed session in order to consider a matter in litigation. The motion that is needed is to hold a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318.11A3, for attorney-client consultation concerning the handling or settlement in the case listed below. And that case is Amanda Mingo as guardian ad litem at AL versus City of Durham at AL, and that is a middle district case federally filed in File Number 120 CV 226.
If you'll take a motion, if you'll take a motion on that.
Well, thank you. Your items are noted, and we will discharge of that at the appropriate time. I'll now, I'm sorry. I'll now yield to the city clerk for any priority items she may have. Good afternoon, Madam Clerk.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor Protem. I did want to remind you, you need to accept the city attorney's priority item.
Yeah, I'm going to.
Okay. And also, there's some disclosure forms on the dais for the council members. We have had a public record request for those, so if you could please fill those out today, and I'll be able to respond to the public record request. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please, we have now heard our priority items. We have one action item from our city attorney to, for a motion to go into closed session at the end of regular business for this work session. She's already read the language into the record, so I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session according to the language that our city attorney's already entered into record.
I'm moved.
I heard a motion from Councilmember Freeman, and we'll take a second from Councilmember Hyman. Madam Clerk, you can't open it. All that will indicate by raising your right hand. All opposed? The chair's opinion of the vote is unanimous. We will go into closed session after our posted agenda has been discharged with. Madam Mayor? We are, the city manager had a, was yours just information on a, you added something to a?
It's Agenda City, yes.
Okay. The city managers, thank you, city managers. The city manager's item requires movement as well? Would you please provide a motion for the city manager's item?
I'll move.
Second.
Heard a motion from the mayor, second from Councilmember Caballero. Would you please indicate affirmative by raising your right hand? Any opposed? Motion's unanimous. Madam Mayor, I think that discharges all of our priority items.
All right. I'll go through the agenda, and then you'll be ready for speakers and our public speakers today and our pooled items. All right. I will read through the entire agenda, beginning with item number one, which is the Durham Homeless Services Advisory Committee Appointment. The Durham Performing Arts Center Oversight Committee is item two. Item three, the Durham Performing Arts Center Oversight Committee Mayor Appointment. Number four, the Mayor's Hispanic-Latino Committee Appointment. Five, the Citizens Advisory Committee Appointment. Turning to our departmental items, item six, On Street/Off Street Parking Performance Audit, January 2023. Item seven, Audit Services Oversight Committee 2022 Annual Report. Number eight, 2022 Raleigh-Durham Airport Authority Annual Report. Item nine, the American Recovery Plan Act Opera Project, Durham Children's Initiatives Connected to Career Pipeline. Item 10, 2022 Durham Open Space and Trails Commission Annual Report. Eleven, 2022 Durham City-County Appearance Commission Annual Report. Twelve, 2022 Board of Adjustment Annual Report. Item 13, 2022 the Planning Commission Annual Report. Fourteen, 2022 Historic Preservation Commission Annual Report. Number fifteen, approval of a multifamily housing facility to be known as Hardy Street Apartments in the city of Durham, North Carolina, with the financing thereof with multifamily housing revenue bonds. Item sixteen, 2022 Durham Community Safety and Wellness Task Force Annual Report. Item seventeen, the budget amendments for certain CIP project ordinances, HUD grant project ordinances, and FY23 annual operating funds. Bless you. Item eighteen, cooperative group purchase contract, three sub- and extreme-duty custom plumper trucks. Item nineteen, construction contract with Bar Construction Company, Inc. for athletic court renovations, Pinewood Park Pickleball. Twenty-one, service contract with Aubrey Max Treat Service LLC for right-of-way stump removal. I'm sorry, skip number twenty, which is the Durham Cultural Advisory Board 2022 Annual Report. Item twenty-two, the Durham Environmental Affairs Board 2022 Annual Report. Twenty-three, the Durham Convention Center Authority Board 2022 Annual Report. Item twenty-four, this former wheels skating center outfit design contract with DTW Architects and Planners Limited. I think we have a citizen who's presenting a card for that item. That's twenty-four.
That was not twenty-four.
Twenty-four is, it was one on the skip. Just read it, just read it from my, it's been updated.
All right. The lease for RDU Presidential Park West Property Owner LP for Durham Police Department District Four Substation is item twenty-four. Okay.
You pulled that one?
Uh-uh. We don't pull that one. It's actually this one we have the speaker on. Item twenty-five has the speaker, which is former wheels skating center outfit design contract with DTW Architects and Planners Limited, right? Item twenty-six, governing service agreements for on-call professional services, geotechnical engineering- Item twenty-six, governing service agreements for on-call professional services, geotechnical engineering, environmental services, surveying, and cost estimating. Item twenty-seven, contract to perform energy audit services between the city of Durham and Alpha Facility Solutions, L L C. Item twenty-eight, the Mayor's Hispanic Latino Committee twenty twenty-two Annual Report. Twenty-nine is Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act Agreement for Adult Worker and Dislocated Worker Program at Kirk Youth Alternatives, Inc. Number thirty, twenty twenty-two Recreation Advisory Commission Annual Report. Thirty-one, the twenty twenty-two National Police Athletic League Endowment Grant Project Ordinance. Thirty-two, twenty twenty-three Duke Doing Good Grant Program Ordinance. Item thirty-three, contract S W dash forty C Construction Engineering and Inspection Services for South Austin Avenue Sidewalk. Number thirty-four, contract S W slash ninety-two Sidewalk Repairs twenty twenty-three. Item thirty-five is contract S T dash three two two Maryland Avenue Bridge Removal. Item thirty-six, the inter-local agreement with Durham County for the administration and enforcement of sediment and erosion control requirements within the city of Durham. Thirty-seven, contract S W dash forty South Austin Avenue Sidewalk Project TIP, T I P number C dash five one eight three B. Item thirty-eight, stormwater infrastructure repairs, S D dash twenty twenty-two dash zero two. Thirty-nine, fellowship placement agreement between the city of Durham and Fuse Corp for designing a sustainable solution to waste management project. Item forty, contract amendment with Granica's L L C Doing Businesses, Granica's S, S, L L C to upgrade the Granica's encoders and software. Item forty-one, the Second Amendment to Purchase Contract for Six Gilac, uh, Gilig Electric Buses, woo-hoo. Item forty-two, uh, twenty twenty-two Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission Annual Report. Item forty-three, the construction of a traffic signal at Hillendale Road and Horton Road. Yes. Item forty-four, nutrient analysis analyzer service agreement with hike company. Okay, y'all know these braces are a little tricky. Uh, item forty-five, the American Rescue Plan Act Opera Update. Item forty-six is our affordable housing deep dive presentation in Durham eviction diversion on Durham eviction diversion program. Item forty-seven, Go Durham F Y twenty-two Annual Report. As for our public hearings, item forty-eight, zoning map change, American Village Townhomes. Forty-nine, Consolidated and Exation Welcome Venture Park. Item fifty, the zoning map change at nineteen oh seven South Miami Boulevard. Item fifty-one, a public hearing on use of home, H O M E, home, American Rescue Plans, Art Funds, A R P Funds. Item fifty-two is a public hearing on and approval of proposed amendments to the F Y twenty sixteen to twenty seventeen, twenty seventeen, through twenty eighteen, twenty eighteen, through twenty nineteen, twenty nineteen, through twenty twenty, twenty twenty, through twenty twenty-one, and twenty-one, twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-two annual action plans. We also have a couple of supplemental items. Item fifty-three is a presentation on single-use plastic bag fees. Item fifty-four is twenty twenty-three long session legislative and advocacy agendas. All right. And item fifty-five is the resolution that we are being asked to vote on today in solidarity with Durham's L G B T Q plus community.
Madam Mayor, I know that Councilmember Johnson's made a, uh, recommendation or a request, but I was going to pull that item. So I'd like to actually have some discussion about that item.
Okay. All right, that concludes the reading of our agenda. And so what I have for, for you to go through, uh, Mayor Pro Tem is item twenty-five, item fifty-four, and item fifty-five. Is that what you have? Our city manager, I'm reading from here, writing. Thank you so much. All right, I'm turning the back over to you for our community comments, Mayor Pro Tem, and to review our pooled items.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just before we, uh, move, uh, Councilmember Caballero pointed out to me that there seems to be a coding issue with item number twenty-eight, the Mayor's Hispanic Latino Committee twenty twenty-two Annual Report. I'd like to bring that to the staff's attention. If you click on M H A L C Annual Report, it looks like Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act Agreement for Adult and Dislocated Worker Program Delivery between the city of Durham and Eckerd Youth Alternatives. My Spanish is not good, but that is most decidedly not, doesn't have anything to do with. I got you. Got you. Thank you. All right, we are, have pulled item number twenty-five, uh, former wheels. Okay. All right, I'm pleased to welcome members of our public who, who wish to speak on item number twelve, uh, item number twenty-five, this pulled item. I have a card from former Councilmember, uh, Jacqueline Wagstaff, who we welcome to the chamber, back to the chamber. And also item number twenty-five, Shanetta Burr, so we welcome to the chamber. Each of you will have three minutes if you come to the podium, and if you'll state your name and address. For the record, you'll have three minutes. Good afternoon and welcome.
All right, I don't think it's over.
Can you hear me now? Uh, back to item number twenty-four. When it coming in, I was here, seeing, hearing the doom and gloom about yesterday's events at Hillside. And I came prepared to speak on this item, and this item right here would directly be linked to what is needed in Durham for some of these youth that are carrying these guns. Unfortunately, the young man that was murdered yesterday, it was a senior. I'm not going to call his name, but I do know his name. The family, uh, uh, is, I'm really speechless at this point to know that we have a school system that parents wake up every day, send their kids to school, expecting that these kids are going to be safe, and these are the results that we're getting. And like you said, Pastor Middleton, um, we have all these wonderful things going on in Durham, but we have a lot of bad things that are going on that overshadow anything that's going on right now that should be considered wonderful. So I can't really stand here and take pride in what's going on in Durham when I know this is going on every day because I work with these young people. And when we talk about some of the solutions, it can't be continuing to be just a whole lot of talk and a whole lot of lip service. Are any of y'all going to go in that trail tomorrow and monitor? I come through there every day, and I see those kids coming through those trails, going to the store, going across the street, and I see that happening, and it worries me. Matter of fact, one day I actually went over to the school and talked to Dr. Logan about a bunch of kids across the street. I said, you need to have somebody out here doing something about it. But with this wheels situation, wheels, if anybody know the history, that was a location that East Durham, PAC one, used that facility. That was a place where low-income individuals could do things with their kids that kept them out of trouble. I spent about twenty years doing summer camps, and wheels was my, like, my twice-a-week place to take the young people to. It was inexpensive, it didn't cost us much, and we were able to go there and do things with families that a lot of things are priced out now. There's nothing down here that any of the families I work with can participate in other than walking down to Central Park and walking around in the park. There's nothing they can do. They can't afford it. You can't afford a burger down here. So this wheels park, I'm hoping that when this is completed, it's accessible to the population that lives in and around that community that had access to that park previously. Because when we start talking about aquatic parks, every body of water in Durham right now has a price attached to it. Campers here? Um, well, I'm not going to go any further, but I just want to say that this park is instrumental in solving some of these problems with our youth.
Thank you so much, Ms. Wagstaff. And, um, Ms. Burris, good afternoon. Before you start, um, Ms. Burris, let me just say, uh, my apologies. We went to the pulled items. We do have cards for folk who, uh, for Citizens Matters to be heard at once. So I apologize. You will be heard, those of you that signed up for Citizens Matters. And as soon as we hear from Ms. Burris, then we'll go back to our Citizens Matters at one. It's, okay. All right. Now, this is for twenty-five. All right. Ms. Burris, I'm sorry. State your name and address. You'll have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and members of council. My name is Shanetta Burr, thirty-seven to one Highgate Drive, and I'm here today to stand in solidarity with my PAC one neighbors who are enthusiastic about the redevelopment of Wheels Fun Park and the Aquatic Center. While there's enthusiasm about the redevelopment of this community space, there are concerns about community involvement in the planning process. As we continue to grow together, it's imperative that the, that concerned and interested residents participate in the process and that communication is clear. It appears that Durham Parks and Recreation failed to meet with community members in the months of November twenty twenty-two, as well as December, and January twenty twenty-three, as they've previously discussed. Moving forward, we hope that Durham Parks and Recreation will restore the practice of engagement with residents to foster trust and include them in the planning process. Moreover, community members have highlighted that the meetings are occurring in silos. For example, there are certain, there are separate meetings for those interested in Aquatic Center and those interested in Wheels. We must achieve a comprehensive understanding of how the site will be developed and the input provided by residents is included in the construction and upfitting of Wheels. Residents more, more than a high-level overview. Details regarding the construction of the Aquatic Center at the site are important as folks, as we ask folks to collectively reimagine these rich community space. People are closely monitoring the R F P process and are seeking clarity on how the ideas, suggestions brought forth by the community are being implemented. Finally, as we are all aware, we are in desperate need of recreational spaces for young people, as well as people my age, right? I like to skate too. So it's critical that we retain facilities like Wheels and create several places as well. I hope this council will explore innovative strategies to ensure that money is not a barrier for residents seeking to utilize these spaces. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being with us. There is one more, uh, speaker on item number twenty-five, and that is Kelsey Monk. Good afternoon, welcome. If you'll state your name and address, uh, for the record, you'll have three minutes. Thank you for being with us.
Thank you. Um, good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members. My name is Kelsey Monk. My address is thirteen oh two Hudson Avenue. Um, I'm a second-generation Wheels customer and a participant in the Resident Steering Committee, such that we do meet. Um, I just wanted to call the council's attention to the timeline and the contract that's up for consideration today. Uh, when we met in October twenty twenty-two, and y'all greenlit Wheels, General Services said that they could get it ready in fifteen months, um, and they outlined eleven core steps to do that. We're at step number three in their outline, and we're already a month behind. So it took about two years for the city to greenlight reopening Wheels. I just don't want it to take another two years to be able to skate again. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being with us. Thank you all who spoke on item number twenty-five. At this time now, we're going to turn to citizens' comments. I have several cards. I'm going to read verse five, and I'll ask that you would just, um, come up in turn, state your name and address, and you'll each have three minutes. James Chavis, Pastor A Wood Senior, Tiffany Swooper, forgive me if that's incorrect, Stacy Donahue, and Atreus Good. Mr. Chavis, good afternoon.
Good afternoon to everyone. And Black History Month to all the black folks in here that's been through the struggle like me and so many others that really know what the struggle is about. I'm coming to speak on Wheels since this is Black History Month. And Black History Month means that we need to look back and see where we been and where we're going. Well, Park and Recreation underway has not done nothing but discriminate against us black folks. You had a young lady already stated, we, we missed three meetings. We was not notified. You had his assistant, Mary, sent out in December that we was going to have a meeting in January. We was not notified, and we did not have that meeting. But come up in January for February, we get this report. The Community Committee, North Park and Recreation, met on this report. We had no input on this report at all. But they're going to tell us, yes, we agreed to what they said. Now, I've been going to the meetings. I didn't go to November because they didn't have one. I didn't go to December because they didn't have one. I didn't go to January because they didn't have one. So how can you come and tell us that this is what we accept and we did not know anything about it? Look on the last page, because I know y'all probably got a copy of it, and turn it over. When Mary sent an email out to us in December saying that we was going to have a, a meeting in January. Mary is white and I'm black. Now tell me who's lying, me or Mary? Tell me this Black History Month that I'm lying on a white woman against a black man. Tell me why should I be standing up here if we had that meeting? Tell me what's important to me being black and still struggling, the fight that was struggling right in this place way before I was born, and right now, we got all these black folks up here, and once again, we are fighting the steel struggle that we once thought before I was born. This is discrimination. Our rights have been violated. But you all going to say it's okay. I'd like to know, since you all been celebrating Black History Month, Councilman Hyman, and all the rest of it, what about our rights that we did not get? Okay? What about us that's been trying to take apart and making things right for the city of Durham? What about us?
Chavis, thank you very much. Pastor A Wood Senior, good afternoon, sir, and welcome. If you'll state your name and address, for the record, you'll have three minutes. Thank you for being with us.
Evening. Uh, my name is Pastor Wood. I've had an opportunity to be here several times and not say anything, but, uh, the young man that you're speaking about at Hillside, I had a personal experience with this young man. Uh, I volunteer over in the Cornwallis neighborhood, uh, with, uh, Miss Swoops. The young man had desires to be, to have his own business. On, in January, I called the police department personally and told them there was gunfire outside of that rec center. She asked me where, when, what, and how many. I said, I'm a pastor, I'm here volunteering. She said, told me, if I have any other problems, call her back. I told them that the center was on lockdown, one police officer did not show up to that center. So you have people in the neighborhood as well that are afraid to come out to let their children come to her center, that she's helping them herself. And you ask what we can do as a pastor, pastor? People say the Bible tells us that people die for the lack of knowledge, right? Who's held accountable? Us pastors, because we're not teaching our children. There's a documentary right now on YouTube. You say we're doing well, as Ms. Wagstaff said as well. You said that the worst place to live in North Carolina, Durham, was on there. All this other stuff you're talking about, Mayor Baer was in, was in office. There were some investors that rode around Durham, pointed out what they was going to tear down and break up before they built that center over there off of the Haytai Center. They spoke. They said, we got a ten-year plan for homeless. Well, they did two things correct. They built up downtown, the homeless still homeless. How I know? I was that bus driver that drove around town and pointed it out. What can we do? Like she says, stop talking. It's time to get up and start. I'm not throwing those stones, but it's time to start talking our children. Because you're talking all these programs, one of the meetings I came here to, so he has some programs, he's going to check it out. I called, uh, 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 Councilman Williams, said, talked about this King program. I called him back in January, asked to find out what we can do to help. I ain't heard from him yet. It's talk. So, Mayor, I'm on your calendar. Like I said, I'm not throwing stones, but I'm willing to help. Like I said, I'm not throwing stones, but I'm willing to help. And things that are not done, you'll see me again. I'll be back in this chamber again. These investors that you talking about buying downtown, I watched police officers give tickets to people sitting downtown when I was driving the bus, to tell them they couldn't sit there no more. Councilman Williams said as well, he's a part of this as well, drinking downtown. He ran us out, but he gave a license for those to sit. It's time to get up.
Pastor Wood, thank you so much for being with us. Tiffany Swoops, good afternoon. If you'll state your name and address, for the record, you have three minutes. Thank you for being with us.
Hi, my name is Tiffany Swoop. My address is 600 Park Offices Drive, Suite 300. My speech has changed a little bit due to the incident that occurred yesterday. The young man who lost his life was very dear to me. I connected with him and worked with him personally since last year when I launched my services at Weaver Street Recreation Center. And what I will say is, he was a young man who had hopes, he had dreams, he had a goal of owning his own trucking company by the time he was 25. Immediately after finishing high school, he wanted to go to barbering school just to start his pathway into entrepreneurship. What I will say is, we all are aware that Cornwallis is a very volatile community. It's impoverished. The people that who live there have been historically marginalized. There's been a lack of services and resources afforded to that community during my time being resident at Weaver Street Recreation Center. And I will also add, I am new to North Carolina, and a lot of things that I am very sensitive to hear seem to be, have been normalized. These youth who are losing their lives in the streets day after day, they are not statistics. They are human beings. They have potential, they have purpose, and they could be very resourceful pillars in the community if given fair opportunity and chance. I am here to ask that you all advocate and consider allocating funds to youth mentoring and youth services because it is very much needed. I don't care how much technology you install to identify gunshots, if we don't have the resources to respond to those gunshots, to make these kids feel that they are safe in their community, to make these kids feel that someone cares, and to have someone there to help guide them to that next level of life, the city's going to remain in a perpetual cycle of what we're experiencing today. I would just want to say that mentors, we bring people from the outside in. It's hard for me to get resources in. I've lost connections just as recent as last month because people from outside of the community don't feel safe within the community. And because the people who are living in the community are stuck in trauma cycles themselves, they don't have the time or the mindset to participate with what I'm doing, which is to break cycles of trauma. That's really the gist of what I have to say. We need resources, we need support, we need our city leaders to make community-informed decisions, ones that are going to help, not help certain parts of the community, but all demographics, to give all demographics access to equality. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being with us. Stacy Donahue, good afternoon, thank you for being with us. If you'll state your name and address, for the record, and you'll have three minutes. Good afternoon.
Thank you. My name is Stacy Donahue. I'm with a nonprofit in Durham called Strong Her Together, and my address is 4209 New Leaf Lane. I wanted to be prepared to you today. I envisioned myself having statistics to talk you through and maybe a nice written-out three-minute speech. And I'm driving over here, and I'm thinking to myself, why do I not have it together? What is, what is up? And what, what was really up when I started thinking about it was mentoring, because that's what myself and our leadership team and our volunteers have been focused on since the inception of our program, but particularly the last couple of weeks with an initiative that we have called Villagers. And Villagers is a program that's designed to remove boundaries to extracurricular learning. So I just want to share with you just a little snapshot of what we've been working on the last couple of weeks to give you some ideas of how mentoring is impacting youth that are involved in our program. I want to paint a picture of, for you, of the girls that we've been working with most recently. Right now, one of them is wearing an ankle monitor. We have kids, one has lost a brother and a best friend to gun violence. We have kids who are constantly evicted. We pick them up from hotels. We have kids who have siblings that become pregnant, move back home, and then kids in our programs are tasked with watching babies while siblings go to work. Just a lot of things that, that point to the fact that these kids are really on the precipice of a path that's, that's a virtual landmine of possibilities to fail. There's no question. But there is a flip side to this, and it's, and it's a pretty cool one. Through, through the efforts of mentoring, what we've been able to see, and trust me, it takes some sleuthing, because these kids that we're working with are not kids who are brimming with self-esteem and confidence, and they want to tell you what it is that their dreams are about, right? But if you can get in there with these kids and do the work in the mentoring, what you're going to find out is this same group of girls, what their dreams are, they want to know about sports medicine, meteorology, space, law, photography, songwriting, same kids. And it's mentors who are having this opportunity to get in and show these kids that they do have a possibility that's different than the possibility that they've seen for most of their lives. So I would say to you, city council members, thank you for considering and voting for this legislation that's going to help us to move youth mentoring forward. And beyond that, I mean, the opportunity for all of you, for programs like ours at Stronger Together and the many more that we're fortunate to have here in Durham, along with school staffs, which are just absolutely incredible, for all of us to partner together and become these fierce advocates for these kids, that is a hope, I think, that all of us in this room have. Thank you for the opportunity to talk with you.
Thank you so much for being with us. Atreus Good, good to see you. If you'll state your name and address, for the record, you'll have three minutes. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm Atreus Good at 3311 Tarleton East. I lead an organization called Youth Mentoring Collaborative. We mentor mentors and mentoring organizations to help them be better at what they do. I did not know today would be mentoring day, but I'm talking about mentoring and specifically from a personal perspective. For those that know my personal story, my mom struggled with drug addiction when I was growing up, and I was forced to deal with a lot of adult issues very early on in life. And my dad was there, but did not have the ability to provide me with the emotional support that I needed to move forward. And so it was my mentor through the Greater Charlotte Chapter, the 100 Black Men of America, that helped me to move forward. The 100's motto is, what they see is what they'll be. So the idea of visioning that is critically important to see people that look like you in positions of influence, to see yourself in that space. And so I was surrounded by black doctors, bankers, lawyers, scuba divers, chefs, a broad array of options to help me understand that I could build a different future for myself. Eventually started a mentoring organization when I was in college, and now doing work to help mentoring organizations be stronger. And I think that what's most important to think about mentoring right now is that we are shifting. And I think that COVID-19 lifted up the veil on what we already knew was a mounting mental health crisis, and young people struggling the most were black and brown students. And specifically, mentoring can be used to, I guess, eliminate some of that mental health stigma, specifically in communities of color, because I recognize that telling a young person to move forward and be successful is one thing, but arming them with the skills, so emotion regulation, distress tolerance, court mindfulness, that is critically important to help them understand that we can all build a life that is worth living. And with everything that's going on right now, it makes it very hard for young people to move forward and be successful. And so thank you all so much for supporting the Youth Mentoring Services Act. Our agency, in a different name, introduced that to the General Assembly, and we had difficulty moving it forward because we did not have bipartisan support. And what I can say is that mentoring and having a positive, supportive adult in your life should not be a partisan issue. I think that all young people should have access to people that simply can say, I care about you. I want to see you move forward and be successful. So whatever can be done here locally to understand that mentoring and having access to those sorts of role models, I would not be who I am right now had I not had someone that said I care about you. But most importantly, allowing me to cry, to shed the bitterness, the frustration that came with my upbringing and build a different, a different course of life. And a lot of people, especially young, black, and brown, you do not have access to mentors. And so whatever you all can do to continue to lift that charge, it would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Brother Good, it's always good to see you. My last card I have is for Katrina Brown. Is Katrina here? Good afternoon. If you'll approach and state your name and address, for the record, you have three minutes. Thank you for being with us.
Hi, my name is Katrina Brown, and I stay at 2519 South Roxbury, Apartment 33 in Cornwallis. Okay. I am here to talk about the youth. Yes, I volunteer at the rec in Cornwallis. And, oh my gosh. I just want to speak on my young black youth. No, they don't have a father figure. They don't have nobody out here leading them. So I just ask that they get any type of funds in that community to where we can help our young black men to where they can lead up to their personality and let them know this more than what they trying to say they is. And I am a mother of five boys, and it's hard because I'm raising them by myself. Without Ms. Scoop and the pastor, my kid, what if that was my kid at that school? My oldest son go to Central. I'm scared for him every day, every day, because he's young and black. I just need some guidance to help the young men. I can't do it myself. I'm out there every day with them. I can't do it myself, and I need help. Anything with a man, I need help with this young youth. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being with us. We appreciate your, your comments this afternoon. Friends, colleagues, that's all of the cards, indication I have of folk who were speaking for Citizens Matters, and we thank all of our, our residents and citizens who took time to be with us this afternoon to let your voices be heard. At this time now, Madam Mayor, with your permission, we're going to go to item, pulled item 54, and this was pulled by our honorable colleague, Dr. Hyman. I'm going to yield to her.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, my colleagues. So I pulled this item because, again, and first of all, I just want to thank the mentoring programs that I had invited here today to speak to us. It's heavy on my heart too, because when I first met Ms. Tiffany Swoop, I literally went to Cornwallis and have been going to the program that she has there. And again, for me personally, growing up in the South Bronx in New York, one-parent household, I would have never been able to be here if people did not wrap their arms around me and mentor me. So I pulled this item because I really would like to see the Youth Mentoring Service Act that we have on our advocacy list to be moved to the action list. As people are saying, we've got to stop talking, and we got to stop doing. And I am very much, number one, a social worker by trade, but number two, a solution-focused person. And so we keep saying, and we keep saying, and we keep saying what we have to do. Youth mentoring, it is evidence-based that youth mentoring does help with risky behavior. We looked at the State of Union Address the other night from the President, and he talked about youth, he talked about substance abuse, and he talked about mental health, the President of the United States. So we have to do something here in Durham. We have to do something for all of our youth, but especially for our populations at risk. And so I'm asking my colleagues to be able to move this Youth Mentoring Service Act from the advocacy to the action list.
Thank you, council member. Colleagues, anyone, questions or comments? I'll have some comments as the chair of the Legislative Committee, but go first.
That was my question. I don't sit on that committee, so.
Anyone else? All right. It's, it's, first off, Dr. Hyman, thank you so much for, for your, for the passion and for the folk who have come out and spoken to us about it. I think it's important for residents and citizens to understand exactly what this is that we're doing. We, as, as a governing board of Durham, of course, don't have a vote in Raleigh. And each year, we send our list of priorities as a city, as mediated by us as a council, to our legislative delegation. And there are two, there are essentially two designations that we send. One is action, one is advocacy. They're not in any ranked order of which one is more important, but our action list, our items that we are asking the legislature, our legislative delegation, to actually draft legislation and try and enter into the process of it becoming legislation. Our advocacy list are items that are equally important, but that we're saying to them, if in your judgment you see an opportunity to take the shot through your relationships with other colleagues, through your, just reading the lay of the land in the legislature, to move on it. It's very important that, that we're not, we're not talking about the importance of mentoring. All of us understand it. All of us support it. All of us embrace it. I was impacted by mentor. I had a father in my home, a very engaged father, but I also had mentors as well who partnered with him. So this is, I wanted to be very clear. This is not about whether or not we think mentoring is important or not. This is the machinations of the political reality of the state legislature and, and what we're, what marching orders we're giving our delegation in Raleigh as they see fit. I have no problem moving it to the action list if colleagues want to do that, but I want folk to understand that the debate isn't the importance of it. One of the reasons why we differentiate our action list from our advocacy list is because, and it was, I think Atreus mentioned, that there wasn't bipartisan support. Sometimes our legislators have to make a determination as to what fights to fight at what time. And sometimes fighting a fight, particularly if it's already been fought, fighting it again when you've got something else in play may antagonize potential allies, may exacerbate efforts to get things done. So what we do, we say to our legislators, we trust you to read the lay of the land and determine when it's appropriate to take the shot or shoehorn this in. But these are the items who we're actually asking you to draft legislation on, and these are the other items that if you see an opportunity to do it, do it. And I think that's important to lay the land. So with that said, I have absolutely no objections if it's the will of the council to move the item from advocacy to action, but it's very important, I think, for our residents and citizens to understand that we're all on the same page when it comes to mentoring. We're all for it. We all applaud the work that our mentors do, and we know we need more funding from Raleigh. And if we have an opportunity to do stuff here locally in terms of funding, I certainly would vote for it. So thank you. Councilmember Freeman.
I just want to follow up and just figure out how we do move it. So do you need a thumbs up? Do you want to have a vote? Like, how do you move forward on that?
Yeah, I, well, I wanted to see if there was any other discussion first, then, then we'll. Is it? Councilman Williams, did you?
No, I, I just, I support this. I know that we have a lot more, we have a lot more flexibility to do more at the local level. So I'll support it, move it to the action agenda, that's fine with me, but my focus will be what we can do locally. Hopefully, the General Assembly will see our hunger for it.
Councilmember Freeman, sure.
And I will add the comment. I think it's important that we do move it to action because it is going to be critical that in this timeframe with all that's going on, that we're advocating as a city to actually have funds available and to make that act a state act, the same way that the Juneteenth is still on the advocacy list for the state, but it's not implemented. I mean, it's implemented federally, but not at the state level, and it's on the list as advocacy in that same vein of what you're talking about. But I feel like the youth mentoring is something, as Mr. Good mentioned, that's nonpartisan, and we can definitely lift that up with our delegation to make sure that it moves forward with a lot more, yeah, action. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. And again, it needs to be understood that this is not binding on our delegation. This is not an order to our delegation. This is an expression of our will and our desire as, as a council. And, you know, we hope it'll do better this time, but certainly, this, this is, it will be, yes, it will be sent to our, this is not being sent to the legislature writ large. This is to our particular delegation that represents Durham, and then they will do our bidding for us there. So with that, just thumbs up if we want to move it from, all right. Staff, if you would note that we'll, I believe that will take item, four items, the number of items on our action list from, I'm sorry, Chief, Chief Wallace, did you want to?
You're correct. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Middleton. If the decision... If the decision of the council is to move the support of the Youth Mentoring Services Act to the action or legislative agenda, that will increase our list by one, so thereby making it five requests instead of four.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you much, all right. Councilmember?
Good afternoon, Ms. Wallace. Real quickly, when we do meet with the delegation, and I know we're meeting with them soon, will we be able to prioritize within that? Like, what, what, because it's a lot, so I just want to have a better understanding.
So typically, they prioritize for us based on some of the comments that Mayor Protem have mentioned, based on what they believe the trajectory of each of these requests are. And the Legislative Breakfast is a public meeting. We are scheduled to have it on February the 20th at 9:00 a.m. in the committee room. The public is welcome. And in previous legislative meetings, the delegation has shared with us in those meetings what they're willing to advance and what they're not. So it's quite possible that we will hear then what they're willing to move forward.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mayor Protem, go ahead.
Absolutely, Councilmember Hyman.
And I just want to also say that this Youth Mentoring Act was also something that was done in 2021, right? And so some of those same people that actually pushed those, this bill are still there. And so I'm hoping to get an audience so that they can hear this. So in terms of us prioritizing, okay, yes, they're going to prioritize it, but I just wanted to put in preference that they have already put this bill in and didn't pass, but they did put it in. And I felt that we need to put it in again because we still have kids dying, we still have things that we're not doing, and that's why I wanted to see it. So I thank my colleagues for allowing us to move this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Colleagues, anyone else on this item? All right then, we will go to item 55, Resolution in Solidarity with Durham's LGBTQ+ Community. I'm pulling it, but Councilmember Johnson had requested action on it. Did you want to make any further comments before I?
Uh, no, I'm happy to just defer to my colleagues for comments or questions.
Thank you. Colleagues, anyone else before I? All right, I pulled this item, firstly, this is absolutely without question something we should be forwarding, a resolution that this should come forth from this council. I, first of all, I want to say, in terms of, just from an institutional history and integrity point of view, I don't, I don't think it's precedent, at least since I've been on council, where we've moved a resolution that was not tied to a deadline that had to do with money or, or something of that nature. They usually come from staff because of the speed of legislation going through a legislature. I don't know that that's something that, I mean, when HB2 was passed, our voice came after that, that legislation was passed as well. So I'm not sure about establishing precedent where because of the speed of legislation going through Raleigh, that our resolution, you know, our voice, I don't think will be less morally powerful after it's passed or not. We're not going to, we can't veto it, we can't stop it from happening. And I think that it's important also that when we put the imprimatur of the city, the voice of the city behind something, that it, that we've had opportunity to massage it and make sure that the language is fully reflective of where we stand. I wanted to call, first off, in the resolution, the attention, the second, whereas, whereas members of the LGBT+ community currently experience the highest rate of hate-motivated violence among all marginalized communities in the U.S., I don't know that that's true. I, I don't know that factually that that's correct. And I think that the, the power of these resolutions is, is the weight, the moral weight of the voice of the people of Durham. And I think it undermines that voice if we say things knowingly that are not factual. An accident is one thing, a mistake is one thing, but, you know, I looked at the FBI and if it's, if there's a source, I mean, in other resolutions, when we've made claims like that, we'll say according to such and such, or according to such and such. I think if this is the case, we need to source this, but the sources I've looked at, I looked at FBI numbers, they published 2021 at the end of 2022, they'll publish the 2022 numbers at the end of 2023. And by far, the, the largest amount of cases are with race. Now, the significant, there is a significant percentage for LGBTQ community, I think it was like, well, that's what was like 19% to 20%, it was almost 69% that was race-based. So I guess my, I don't think this, this resolution is ready to move yet. Firstly, just on that point, and then I have one other question, because I think this should be tight, I think this should be, if it's going to have the imprimatur of our city, you know, we should be able to, we, I don't think we do any favors to our, to the community or to our allies if we don't take care to make sure that our moral voice is unimpeachable as much as possible. And facticity and righteousness are not mutually exclusive. So my first question is, where did this number come from and how is it sourced?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. The number is sourced from the FBI, which shows that the victimization rate for LGBTQ people, so the rate at which LGBTQ people experience hate crimes is the highest of any other group. The number of hate crimes that happen in the U.S., the number of hate crimes against black folks is the highest, but the victimization rate for black people is four victims per 100,000 population, and the victimization rate for LGBTQ people is 11.9. I'm happy to send you this data that was taken from, from the FBI figures and published online.
Right, I looked at, I think we should, I think we should somehow source that because as it reads now, experienced the highest rate of hate-motivated violence again, among all marginalized communities. As that reads now, I think that's questionable in the way it's framed.
I'm sorry, I don't, did, what about it do you feel is questionable, given, I mean, are you, do you doubt that that, that what I just told you is true, or do you think that? I don't understand.
I'm not going to fall into that trap. Clearly, I don't, I don't doubt that the level of violence against members of the LGBT+ community is, is high, but you use the term victimization rate, which is, and if it's turning on the term victimization rate, we should probably say that.
It says, it says rate, though.
It, you used the word, but why are you using words that, let's use the words that you used in the resolution. I mean, if we're, and that's my point, if somebody reads it back to me, if we have to add a word or clarify it, then that type, then that says something to me. I mean, let's make it as tight as possible. As it reads now, I can see members of other communities, particularly the black community, taking issue with it as it's framed. So let's just be precise with the language.
I don't understand what's not precise about the word rate.
Let me put it this way, you said victimization rate as if there's something different between that and what's said here. So why not put victimization rate in there?
We could put victimization rate in there. I don't think that using the word rate is inaccurate, however. I use the word rate, highest rate, not highest number. So I don't understand your objection. I did not say that LGBTQ people experience the highest number of hate-motivated attacks. I said, we experience the highest rate.
I don't think that framing is accurate either. And based upon my reading of the FBI documents, the FBI numbers that I saw, but if, I think that what a, a, a path forward might be is, why don't we source it? Why don't we put according to, as we've done, that's well-established precedent, according to the American Heart Association, according to U.S. Bureau of Labor and Statistics. I mean, that's not uncommon. Why don't we source that in this, in this resolution?
So you want me to say according to the FBI?
According to wherever you got it. Why is that, why is that controversial?
I think it's unnecessary, that's all.
I, I, why would we want to make a declaration of, of something that on its face could invite scrutiny, could invite, and I think that takes away from the main goal we have here, and that is to bring the moral weight and voice of our city in alignment and in conjunction and cooperation with our brothers and sisters in the LGBTQ+ community. And if there's ways we can make this document tight to minimize any distractions, why wouldn't we want to do that? Why wouldn't we want to source a statement that on its face invites controversy?
It's an accurate statement, and I take issue with the fact that you're questioning it, given that you very rarely question accurate statements in resolutions brought by other people in this council and about other issues. That's my issue.
I knew you would.
But I think it's unnecessary.
Hold up, hold up, the mayor's going to have to jump back in, and we will hear from Councilwoman, who's at Hyman, for a second.
So I'm going to put my professor hat, and I was going to say, essentially, we always talk about, what, excuse me, evidence base, right? So I can understand the citing, but we could also use populations at risk. That is a population at risk, point blank. So I don't only understand the wordsmithing, but it is a population at risk, and I feel the way it's worded is talking about populations at risk.
You literally use different words and that's there, though. Why can't we, why can't we, why do we, why do we read something and then use different words and say that's what it's saying? If, if that's what you said is true, then why don't we just put that? Why, why can't we just be precise with language?
But I, I don't want to go back and forth, but I just, I want to say too that I think it's irrelevant to the evidence base and sourcing and stuff like that. We're talking about people. And so I'm just going to leave it at that.
I'm going to turn to Councilwoman Cavier for a couple of comments.
Thank you. We are not on consensus. I just want to say I appreciate my colleague, I, I understand the urgency behind this resolution, and we can wordsmith it and we can accept maybe some friendly amendments to language. I don't really care. What I do want is for folks in our community, like, what is happening in this state right now and across this country targeting LGBTQ and trans people is terrifying, it is moving us to a fascist state, and everybody needs to be aware. Black folks, Latino folks, immigrants, gay and trans folks. The time is done for this, quite frankly. It is a dangerous, dangerous time in our state. What is happening in the General Assembly for a parent, for any of us who have LGBTQ+ friends, neighbors, loved ones, I, we can wordsmith this to death, but I really just need some resolution on this. This is, we talk about the fear that some of us have, there's a lot of fear for lots of reasons in this community, and I need Durham to stand up.
All right, do you have any comment, Councilwoman Freeman, and then we'll just take it to a vote. I think that's what Councilwoman Johnson is asking, is that what you're asking for today?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, thank, thank you, Madam Mayor. I was just going to note that I completely understand the sense of urgency and that it is important that we do stand in solidarity, but I do think that Mayor Protem is correct in that we do want to make sure that the language can't be challenged in a way that makes us look like we don't know what we're talking about. And so whenever there's pushback on a resolution like this, I feel like we should take it, just either add the source or change the language, but it should actually reflect what we're trying to say as much as possible, just acknowledging how our media and legislature tend to use our words against us. And so I, I don't know that that needs to take extra time, and I'm not sure what the delay, like what, what Monday nights, you know, 10 days from now difference would be, so somebody has to explain that to me, what the rush is to suspend the rules and vote today, because that I am not certain on, that's all.
Madam Mayor, thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you, colleagues. And I do want to, I want to be very clear about the theater going on here, and this is theater. I have written a number of resolutions, all of which went through the mill. I wrote Durham's Resolution on Anti-Semitism, Homophobe, Anti-Semitism, White Supremacy, and Islamophobia. And I went back and forth with colleagues, former colleagues on this council, back and forth. I've written a number of resolutions in which we've had time to massage it and wordsmith it. So the notion that it's somehow different or exotic, that we're massaging or wordsmithing a resolution is simply not true. Secondly, when we put the imprimatur of our city, the weight of our moral voice as a city behind something, why would we not want to make it as tight and precise as possible? Don't we want it to be unimpeachable? This isn't our seal, it's the city's seal. No one is saying that this resolution should not, do not fall for that trap. We need to speak on this issue. We need to. But I would, do not, do not fall into the trap that we need to speak so urgently that we can't do it with proficiency and efficiency. We can. We do it all the time. We do it all the time. There's no money tied to this, we have no veto power over what Raleigh does. Raleigh been doing this stuff all the time. We, we know what comes out, we know what they churn, so this isn't a surprise. HB2, we watched HB2 happen before we responded. It was long after. So yes, this is, this is a, and with due respect, I mean, folk can read. I mean, if you look at a document and you have to explain it by using other words that's not in the document, that's a telltale sign. And if the words that you're using aren't on the page, all I'm simply saying is, if you think those words are better, put those on the page, or stick by the words you actually said. This language is questionable as it's currently put. It's questionable, and I think it causes dissension amongst folk who should be arm-in-arm locked on this. There are plenty of ways we can capture the spirit of this document. There are plenty of ways that we can transmit the, the power of our moral voice as a city and still be correct and accurate. They're not mutually exclusive. And I'm not going to fall into the trap that simply questioning the language used so we can, it can be most forceful and most effective, is somehow not supporting it. Nobody's going for that. That's theater. You're back, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. We're going to turn to Councilwoman Williams, and then we're going to try to see if we can make some friendly amendments and then we can vote up or down. I think we have to do a motion to suspend the rules in order for us to vote it up or down to move it forth, okay?
Yeah.
I'll have a couple of comments and then I'll ask for Councilwoman Johnson to carry through her motions. We're going to ask you to suspend the rules, and then we'll go from there. We can do this in decency and on order. All right, it's all right to disagree sometimes. Robust conversations, let's go.
Yep, all right. And for the record, everyone on this council supports our, support our LGBTQ community. This is what democracy look like, and it's messy sometimes, and we just want to have it tight. So we hear whispering with Councilmember Johnson, and I think if we were to just simply make one little wordsmith here where it says experienced one of the highest rates, I think that, that solves it across the board for us. And she's perfectly fine with it, so we need to get this through.
I'm not perfectly fine with it?
Not perfectly fine.
Thank you.
But we can get there, we can get there.
You would agree that we, that will be a median point to get to the vote, to suspend the rules? Go ahead and get to the vote, if we make that friendly amendment.
I have no further comment.
All right. Okay.
I know how my sister feels, I have my stuff torn up all the time. I mean, you know, I've submitted stuff that did not look the way it did when I first submitted it. I didn't take it personally, we, you know, that's just the way democracy works.
Let's move through the...
Madam Mayor, I'll suggest that amendment if the council is okay with it.
Let me change with our attorney to make sure, first, we need to suspend our rules to go ahead, and then you can make your friendly amendment. Just want to get some clarification on, on how we move it on each one, because we do have a friendly amendment to the document that we probably need to vote on as well.
Sure, Madam Mayor. So yes, if council's going to take action at a work session, you need to entertain a motion first to suspend the rules to take action. Once that motion is through, you can deal with the motion on the floor.
Okay. All right, go ahead. I think we have a question from Councilwoman.
Just a question regarding making changes to the resolution and then making it available to the public. How does that work? Like, I don't know that you can change it from what it is right now and then allow folks to review. Like, I think that's part of the process, that's why we do it, this, the way we do it. So I'm trying to, I'm trying to reconcile that part of this, because I know that's been explained to me in the past, that you can't just make the changes the day of and then that, so I'm, I'm just, I'm just a little confused because that's not how it was explained previously, that's all.
Thank you, Councilmember. So as I would understand this process, once the rules have been suspended, someone would put forth a motion to adopt the resolution. If others want to offer friendly amendments during the consideration of that motion, then that could proceed. And maybe I didn't understand your question because you look very confused.
So if the document itself is changing, the resolution that we're approving is changing, there doesn't need to be a review, is what I'm saying.
A review from whom?
It sounds like I was lied to before, that's what I'm getting at. That's what I'm getting at.
Lied to by whom? I, I'm sorry, lied to? Madam Mayor, I don't have the ability to answer that question.
Wait a minute. Wait a minute. Let's, let's, let's hold up for one second. Okay, so Councilwoman Freeman just explained your understanding of what was told to you about the rules. From, from what I'm hearing, this is the first time, and I want the general public to get, to understand some of the intricacies. Okay, so this is the first time this has happened since I've been mayor. Councilwoman Johnson is act, has asked the council to suspend the rules and move this resolution as it was promulgated by her today and move, move it as an, move it and, and, and rule on it, right? Suspend rules, we either vote it up or down. And then from there, it would move. Now, according to what you're saying, Councilwoman Freeman, that is not your understanding of the process after it is changed, I believe is what I'm hearing you saying. If a resolution is changed, then there is a process that it has to go to the public for them to consider it. Is that what you're saying? I don't know. Okay, so can you turn on your mic and elaborate what was explained to you? Because you're.
Mayor O'Neal.
Okay. I'm in that one. Just keep it short, though, Mark. And, and, and I'm sorry, Monique and Mayor Protem, Dr. Hyman, let's move it along.
Yeah, I just wanted to, can I just say that, like, when I did my first one, the school safety, I think we voted on it and then Mayor Protem and other people had corrections and then they made those corrections and then that was public. So that's what happened with the one I did.
We actually did it before we voted, but you, you're right, there were, yeah. And Madam Mayor, if I can, just for, again, for the point of institutional integrity and what actually happened historically, this is unprecedented where a, a council member has asked us to move a resolution totally pinned by them without the courtesy of having their colleagues able to wordsmith it, time to digest it, and then to suggest that to, to, to lean on what has been established protocol and decorum for this body is somehow against the spirit of it. That is absolutely unprecedented. To suspend the rules, to move a resolution that has nothing to do with money, that's, there's no timeline in terms of hiring, is unprecedented. It has not happened. So, you know, to, to, to the notion that, you know, wordsmithing is, is, it's part of our process. What normally happens is when colleagues have issues, we have cordially said, okay, we'll take it back, we'll send you our words. We've even agreed to pass it on the next Monday meeting after we've adopted our friendly amendments and we've wordsmithed it. This is a resolution, it's not an ordinance. This is something that has resided with, with incredible cordiality and collegiality amongst us. It's something that we've done informally. It's something that's been very, it's never been this controversial a process because we've never asked us, any one of us has never asked this body to put the imprimata of a city on something that they wrote exclusively without any review or consideration whatsoever. That's unprecedented. That's why we're having this conversation. What I would recommend is that we lean on regular order. There is no money involved, there is no deadline involved. Raleigh gonna do what Raleigh gonna do. They've been doing it. And our voice will be no less morally powerful when we pass this than if we pass it at our next Monday meeting or now. But if we're going to move forward in this way, then to counsel, to the spirit of Councilmember Freeman's comments, then, then we need to have time to wordsmith it. That's why we, we take it offline outside of these meetings so we don't take up this much time in this context to do it collegially, or cordially amongst colleagues. That's how it's happened. This is new, some new stuff.
Are there any further comments? Now, I, I do have to say one thing, you know, just, I, I realize that precedent means a lot, but these are, as I've talked with our attorneys, she's explained that those are our rules and you also have the opportunity, as you hope you would, you know, to adjust or modify your rules or, or rely on precedent. But just because it hasn't been done before doesn't mean that it can't. You know, that's just that life. It can, it can happen if it hasn't done before. And I like the spirit of the debate to see how we react in these circumstances, but I do think that it does really kind of call for a vote up or down, whether you want to do as they've asked or you don't. And we, we vote on that.
Madam Mayor, and I'm, I'm going to say that this might not, my memory may not be correct, right? So I'm just putting that in there. But I think that what happened at some point was we created this process to give the space when folks were introducing resolutions and it was just an opportunity. So when I think that there's precedent and things, it, it is certainly within the last four years. I wouldn't be able to tell you because I think we, we talked about doing this along the way. And I don't remember which council member had put a resolution forward and I think there was a lot of friendly amendments offered in that space, in that work session. And so then we had come up with this, you know, maybe we should do it this way. And it was to allow some space and some time for folks to wordsmith and whatnot. That is my recollection. I don't remember which amendment or which council member, or sorry, resolution or which council member, but I do remember we were kind of in this wordsmithing and taking a lot of time up. And so we kind of came up with this, somebody please ask ahead of a work session. And I think we decided a few, you know, which Councilmember Johnson did, hey, I'd like to bring forward, and Councilmember Holsey Hyman did recently, hey, I'd like to bring this resolution forward. We give our thumbs up, the person introduces the language. And then we do pass it, you know, at one of the subsequent meetings, but that is a process we kind of came to along the way, if that makes sense. And maybe my memory is not correct and that's fine, but that's how I remember it happening. To my council member or to my colleagues' points, yes, in the last four years, I don't remember us suspending the rules for this, but that's not because there was some major roadblock to it. It was just the process we created along the way.
Yeah, but I, I, I really appreciate the debate. I actually had another amendment as well to, and this is why we, we, we have a work session to get to massage the language and, and, and give our input, which we have a right to do, to, if, if in our opinion it'll make it stronger. So I wanted to, in addition to, and I thank the, the council member for accepting the, one of the highest rates. I, the, the plank where it says, whereas protests and demonstrations targeting drag shows and drag performers have increased dramatically over the last several years with such protests being held in several locations in North Carolina, I'm wondering if the council member would be amenable to adding harassment and threats. And the reason why I say that is because the protest, the, the bills that have been introduced, the, the healthcare issues, those are actual hardcore act governmental actions and policy issues. What I'm concerned about is somebody saying, and because they've done it before, is, oh, their protest and demonstrations are, are protected activities under the Constitution. Y'all protesting and demonstrating after George Floyd. And when I read this, you know, as, as abhorrent as some of the things that I hear people say, you know, I took an oath to a constitution to protect their right to say it. As, as hateful as some of the things I've heard people say, their right to protest and demonstrate is enshrined in our culture. What they, where the line is crossed is when those protests and demonstrations turn into threats and harassment. And I'm wondering if we might want to, in addition to what's protected behavior, as abhorrent as it is to us with protests and demonstrations, if you'd be amenable to, to muscularize that language a bit, where we, where we also recognize that these aren't just constitutionally protected protests and demonstrations, these things cross the line where they're harassing people and physically threatening them, which has been the case. And I, I think the language should, should reflect that.
Thank you so much, Mayor Protem. At the time that we, after we, the first motion I think will be to suspend the rules and then we'll vote on that. After that, the considerations will be to wordsmith with the two friendly amendments. And then at the end of that, I believe that we voted up or down as to whether it proceeds. Would that be correct?
Or, or, there's one other. Or we don't suspend the rules, we engage in regular order and we get together as colleagues collegially and wordsmith it and have it ready to pass at our next, we're, council meeting in regular order.
And that's, and that would be fine too. So do we want to vote on that part first, that we keep it with regular order? All right. Let us do that by a hand vote. All those in favor of keeping, basically letting it run through the process that it normally runs through. So we'll go to GBA. Thumbs up for those okay with that. Thumbs up for those who are not okay with that. All right, we have five, two. All right, it will stay as it is and move to GBA next week. And please note those two amendments, I would ask that you all try to include those in a draft form and get those out to us so everybody has an opportunity.
Absolutely.
Review. All right. Okay. Is that the end of all our pooled items? I think that was the last pooled.
I believe so, Madam Mayor. Yes, ma'am.
All right. Okay, we'll head now into our presentations this afternoon and we have some great ones up. I can't wait for some of these presentations. So we're going to start first with item 45. That's going to be the American Rescue Plan Act. That's going to be led by Councilwoman Caviar. Item 46 is Affordable Housing Dive. Councilwoman Holsey Hyman will lead that. Councilman Williams will lead item 47, which is Go Durham. And after that, Councilwoman Johnson will be leading the presentations on single-use plastic bag fees, which is a supplemental item. All right, let's roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon. I see Ms. Johnson and her awesome team. And we're ready whenever you are.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor O'Neal, Mayor Protem Middleton, City Council members. I am Bertha Johnson, Deputy City Manager for Operations. I am delighted to be here today to provide you an update on American Rescue Plan funding. I want to take the opportunity to introduce my team. Some are existing, were existing city employees and some we hired into this process. I would say more than not, most of them have not worked in local government before. So we've had a, had a fun time getting up to speed on our local government bureaucracy and the way in which we follow through with our processes and procedures. And we also have some other folks in the room who you'll hear from later in the presentation. So we have Robert Morales here, who is our Senior Manager for Grants. We have Victoria Samayor, Administrative Coordinator, Scott Strain, who is our Grants Writer, and Shayla Light, Senior Grants Accountant. And one of the person I want to mention on our team is Carlos Hernandez in the City Attorney's Office. And I would have to say Carlos spends a significant amount of his time working with us and so we appreciate the City Attorney's Office for allowing him to spend so much time with our team. So just as a reminder, most of these slides you have seen before. The American Rescue Plan is an extraordinary federal policy response to the COVID-19 pandemic. It is also a historic opportunity for us to deal with some of our longstanding racial and economic inequalities and pandemic exposed issues. We, at the City of Durham, received 51.8 million, Durham County 62.4, and we'll talk later about how we can collaborate to leverage our resources. So again, the American Rescue Plan funding, it's, it's very flexible around, you know, the categories that you can use, but we have also some final rules who are a little bit more, more stringent. But I'll talk about the, the top four here. Revenue replacement, respond to far-reaching public health, provide premium pay, which we did for many of our employees, water, sewer, land, infrastructure. So when we found out that we were going to receive this funding, we came to City Council. Some of you were not here at the time. And we proposed a process and we started out with an internal process, which was, which was advised to us by the award notice. So we went to our internal departments to look at what we needed as an organization. We also proposed to City Council that we bring back those ideas to City Council for approval, which we did. And then we embarked upon a community engagement activities to go out to the community and ask the community what they believe we needed to use these funds for related to the COVID pandemic. So here was our initial timeline. We wanted to have engagement, review, you know, allocation, and again, evaluation at the end of the process, which will happen not only with us, but also from U.S. Treasury and the federal government. I wanted to remind you all that this process, doing this process, we gathered a lot of information from our residents. We hosted community events. We developed a survey in partnership with Durham County, North County Central University, and community-based organizations. To increase public awareness, we advertised this opportunity in the newspaper as well as other magazines and broadcast. We placed and we shared this information during the PB process. We utilized contacts gained through many of our other outreach opportunities like PB and the CONC Plan. We also sent out email blasts to all residents and folks who had engaged with us in different ramps in the city to make sure they were aware of this funding. More than 80 proposals were received during the deadline and were reviewed for eligibility. And we'll talk later about the different projects that were initially funded. And we engaged in partnership with Durham, Durham County again, North County Central University, and NIS and our Office of Equity and Inclusion. North County Central University actually had specific hosts who worked with us. We had Dr. Henry McCord, we had Dr. Harper, as well as Dr. Page, who actually served as the host, who were bringing folks to the table to engage and they helped us actually design the engagement process. Again, we had two community-wide events. You may recall that we started out with those events, calling those events budget healing events. That was a term that came to us from, at the time, Councilmember Prelon, who had proposed we do budget healing events. And once we received this funding, we thought, wow, now we can have funding to support the, the information that we get and the proposals we get from the community. So again, we received over 300 survey responses. The survey responses were not necessarily proposal, they were just ideas or people's comments about how we should use the money to support the community. But the final actually proposals, that number was 80. So during one of our events, we asked the participants to rank the following eligible uses in order they think should be prioritized. As you can see here, number one, economic impacts, and the last one, water, sewer, infrastructure. And you all have seen these slides before, but I just wanted to remind everyone of how we got to where we are and the decisions we made in the first round of funding. We then went back to those residents, so whoever showed up, residents showed up at the second event. And we asked them, so what criteria do you think is most important in evaluating proposals? And as you can see here, the number one is racial equity. But actually, we paused for a minute, we worked with Equity and Inclusion to actually create an equity tool to use for that criterion. So we created a matrix and these were the components, the criterion in that matrix. Eligibility obviously is first. That is based on U.S. Treasury eligibility, which is why you had eight proposals and you ended up with 34 because they had to be eligible based on those guidelines. And again, equity impact, that was where the equity tool determined whether the project was equity-based. Collaboration, we wanted to make sure that the proposals actually collaborated with other organizations or the community. There may be other nonprofit organizations who were doing the same, who had the same mission and we wanted them to do that collaboration. Obviously, we wanted it to align with our goals. We wanted the proposals to be community-driven. We asked them, did you go out into the community? How did you talk to the community about this? How do you know that this is what's needed in a community? So during COVID, obviously, a lot of times that was really surveys or that was information that they already had because they've already been working in a community. And then administration, we looked at how feasible was the proposal for us to administer in the organization as well as look at the data collection and all the other requirements of the funding. And the last criterion was the qualified census tract, which is the HUD tract that was provided to us by U.S. Treasury. So how did we ensure the investments aligned with federal guidelines and community priorities? We received lots of proposals, the 80, and we put those into these groups here, health and wellness, safe, stable housing, economic equity, and community resiliency. And as you may recall, we had, at the beginning, we had one category, education, and we removed education based on feedback from council and we changed it to the community category. category. Just to remind you all, we had review committees made up of county employees, city employees, and residents. So at those events, we asked residents, if you're interested in participating in the review process, let us know, and we will put you on a team based on your interest, as well as your experience. Some, we also had some volunteers who did not submit their project on time, sent us a proposal. It was past the deadline, so we invited them to participate on the, on one of the committees in order to be part, still be part of the process. So here is some of the data about our review committee participants. So in December, we gave you all an update, and we shared with you our thoughts around how we should move forward in making decisions about which proposals we fund. In May of 2021, council selected which proposals would be awarded at seventy percent of the original, original requested amounts. So we had, you all had the big spreadsheet, which you have as part of your agenda packet. You all looked at the spreadsheet. We had recommendations to, to fund at a hundred percent, the staff recommendation, at a hundred percent, those with a score of twenty-four or, or above. City Council looked at the spreadsheet, went away, had an opportunity to review those proposals, came back and thought all of those proposals were good proposals, and decided to fund them at seventy percent, maximum one million to all proposals. At seventy percent of the funding request, maximum one million. So, and that is really important, important to point out as we think about transformation, where some of the proposals came back to us and said, we propose, you know, five million or, or something really big, we're only going to get seventy percent or max of one million. And so we talked about how we would be coming back to, to City Council, where you may focus on a smaller subset of those, or one of the particular categories that we mentioned in the earlier slide. City Council also deferred some proposals for City Council, City County consideration based on the county allocation determination. At the time, Durham County had not gone through their process. So you all asked us to hold those and maybe revisit those after we had, after Durham County finished their process. And they actually started with us, and they went through a different process, where they selected categories upfront and then looked at the organizations that could meet the requirements of, of those categories. So it wasn't really a, a match. The funded project proposals worked with staff to draft agreements. You've seen many of those, outlining the terms, conditions, and reporting requirements. As I mentioned in the last update, this took quite a bit of time, because by the time we came back to those proposals, we were under the final rules, and the final rules required us to collect more data. It changed the eligibility, it changed the documents and the, and the qualification data that we had to collect as an organization to be in compliance. So it was basically like starting over again with the organizations. So it took a lot of patience and a lot of back and forth to get those scopes created, and also have all of our, every agenda item that came to you all and the contracts, we actually sent those through the Attorney's Office. In some cases, they met with the school of government or other, you know, authorities to ensure that before they passed that on to you all, that they felt comfortable that those projects were eligible. And that was a good process. And I'll talk about some of the other things we did in the interim between when you gave us that, that directive and we came back to you with those items. So again, the approved proposals, we had seventeen in economic equity, nine in community resiliency, six in stable, safe and stable housing, and two in health and wellness, twenty point six million. So what happened next? We hired a grants manager, we, Robert. We organized our ARPA team, as you see here, in addition to Carlos and, and Fred initially began this process with us, because it required a lot more work to create the, the policy. We developed the policy because that is what was recommended as a best practice. Not all cities created a, a separate policy, but we agreed that that was a best practice. And we wanted to do that because we know people don't always stay in the same place, and we wanted to make sure over the years that there would be continuity in applying these funds and approving proposals. We developed templates with the Attorney's Office for the sub, the subrecipient agreement and subaward agreements, and the local agreements, when we were working with the county and other government agencies and memorandums, understanding for those proposals that were internal departments. We had one-on-ones with every single organization multiple times, probably not as efficient as we would have wanted the process to be, but we were learning as we were going along. And so sometimes we met with them, we went back, we found out that we needed to get additional information, or they submitted documents, we sent them to the Attorney's Office, and we went back. So if you hear that from organizations, it is absolutely true. There were times when we had to meet with them on multiple occasions, but, but, you know, it all worked out in the end. We had to, again, rework the scopes. What we realized again is, when organizations submitted their proposals, they may have submitted that proposal on five million, or one million, or two million. And then we said, you're going to get, you know, one million, or if they, you know, some other amount. We had to go back and say, now give us a scope based on that funding and give us metrics based on that funding. And so that was a, that required some time, as organizations had to work through their programs and services to come back and give us that data. So we submitted agreements to departments for review. Again, if it was a related department, you know, we'd thank community development when there were projects related to housing, or, you know, rental assistance or those proposals, we reached out to them and met with them for them to help us understand the proposals and make sure they were in alignment with what we were trying to accomplish in community development and not redundant, duplicative, and in the work that they're doing. So we appreciate that. So again, that was one example of a department that we met with to talk about the proposals, where we had subject matter experts in the organization. And then we had to create a monitoring process. We needed to make sure that we could explain to the proposers, to the organizations, what the requirements would be around monitoring. And I would say, we had some organizations, we had several who, to this day, have not committed to the funding, because they have not committed to the monitoring process because of capacity. And that's a, that's a major, a major issue that we're trying to work through. And even concerns around those who have, are accepting the funding, but it's yet to, it, it remains to be rescined if they actually have the capacity to do the monitoring, which will require the staff to do more in terms of making sure that the City of Durham is safe in terms of, you know, spending the, the federal dollars. So here are the list of the agreements that have come through City Council today. These are, a lot of the ones were in the, in the top of the list, because they had the highest score, they already had probably received large grants, they may have already received federal funding. They were the easiest organizations to create the scope and get the contracts through the process. So the discussion we really want to have today is around the remaining funding. And I wanted to remind you of what we've already done, what the process is like, as you think about, you know, how you want to use the remaining funding. Twenty-two point five six million. So I want to start out talking about potential joint city-county affordable housing efforts. Again, we wanted, we want to look at how we can leverage our resources and collaborate with Durham County and anyone else who has, you know, money to put to this, to accomplish some of our, some of our goals. As you recall, in December, community development put out a request for proposals for affordable housing, to, to supplement financing for affordable housing developments, utilizing low-income housing tax credits. A total of nine projects were received. We actually funded four of the projects at sixteen point eight million, and we funded four because that was all the funding we had available for the projects. What you see on your screen here are the remaining four projects. So we, based on those projects coming forward and based on the feedback, we assume that those are projects we're still very much interested in actually implementing, and because Durham County is interested in contributing some of their ARPA funds to affordable housing. And this amount is twenty point nine million needed. And again, we want to commit to the dollar amount, not necessarily the exact amount for each project. As you all know, it's, some time has passed, and we'll need to get some updates. But we want to make that commitment, if we're going to make that, be, so that we can go back to Durham County and say, you know, we're willing to commit ten million if you all commit ten million, which was the initial number that we shared with, with Durham County. And again, Reginald Johnson is here today if you have questions about the projects. So the second group of projects were the projects on the list that you all deferred for joint city-county consideration. Again, the county's process changed to be different in categories versus looking at the specific organizations. As you may recall, we shared all of our proposals with Durham County, and they participated in our engagement process. But they, their process changed in the end in terms of how they actually decided how, which organizations to fund. On this list, I think there are two that Durham County is planning to fund. That is YMCA, and there's, I think it's the, it's the main, yes, It Takes a Village project. Those are two that they are committed to some type of funding. Now, when you look at the numbers here, obviously, these numbers are the initial requests. They haven't been reduced, as you did with the other organizations. So this is a second, I guess, option, to revisit these projects. They came in with the initial batch of projects, there were initial proposals, they came in within the, the deadline of project proposals. We have not done anything else with these projects. So the third list of projects I have here are projects that came in after our deadline. Those projects may have come through the ARPA email address, they may have come to the city manager, they might have come to all of you, most of you, I'm sure all of you've seen these products in one form or another, but they've come through and the request was tied to ARPA funding. And so we put those on the list, primarily to be transparent that they came through as a request of ARPA funding. But some of them, you've heard from these folks recently in council meetings, and some you may not have, but if you have questions about those, I'm happy to try to answer those questions. But I, I, I feel like you're probably familiar with all of these requests. And the last group of projects, we, as we accepted projects that came from outside the organization after the deadline, we also have two projects that we're interested in that came from internal departments. General Services submitted a request for funding for, for the Urban Forestry Division for Tree Planting Initiative. And this is really focused on the canopy, and it's around the data around reducing energy costs in underserved neighborhoods by fifty percent by increasing the tree canopy. And the folks from General Services are here also, if you have questions about that, that request. And then we have another one from General Services, Solarize the Triangle Initiative. And this is really focused on how do we actually help solarize homes for residents and, and low-to-moderate income households to help reduce their electricity bills? And, and that would, I believe that is sixteen to twenty eligible households will be addressed with this funding. And so again, I'm not very familiar with this program, but we have the folks in the room who are happy to answer any questions you might have. So again, what we, we're asking for is feedback on how to prioritize the remaining funds. We, the team will continue to, you know, once we hear back from you all, we'll work on establishing guidelines and processes based on these proposed ideas or requests, as well as any of those that you all have. Again, we still have to, once the decision is made, we still have to go back through the process. We have to refine the scope, determine that if the projects are eligible, and complete the required documentation, set up the monitoring, meet with the organizations. And so the process does not change, but we need to get guidance on how you all want to prioritize the, the remaining funds. So here's our proposed timeline, which is where we are now, February to April, council select projects or initiatives. And then we go through, again, our, our process, and then we negotiate contracts. Again, if those were, depends on what the proposals are, where those contracts get negotiated. Obviously, if those are affordable housing process, it would be the community development team and not our team. And then council, the contracts will come back to you all again, as they always do for final decision-making. So just as a reminder, we are always have our website up. We have our ARP@durhamsc.gov email for, for our residents and folks to contact us. We have our website up. As we always do, we'll put this up on the website for residents to look at this discussion, so that they have questions or concerns, they can share that feedback with you or the staff as well. And so we try to make sure we keep that as updated as possible, which is why we send folks to our webpage when they have questions about events or upcoming council meetings about this, this topic, which is why you might have some, a lot of interest today. So that is the end of my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions. I am sure the manager is here as well to support me in that, because we've had a lot of conversations about these proposals. It's, it's a tough decision.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I'm going to let, I have a couple of residents signed up to speak on the presentation, so I want to let them go ahead and speak. The person I have right now is JB Buxton, and I don't know, I think he's here with us. And then I wasn't sure, Madam Clerk, if there's anyone on Zoom that signed up.
There's one individual on Zoom, Pamela Andrews, but she did not indicate which item number she would like to speak to.
Okay, after we let Mr. Buxton speak, we'll ask which item. Thank you.
Okay, that's fine.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Could you please state your name?
JB Buxton.
Thank you.
President Durham Tech.
And you have three minutes.
32 Beverly Drive, although if the college, sixteen thirty-seven, he's Lawson. Council members, I appreciate the opportunity to come speak to you. I want to make sure you know a couple of things about our affordable housing project. I first want to say, we feel fortunate to be in a city and county that has made this one of its highest priorities. And we want to be part of that solution. And I say that on behalf of our Board of Trustees, our Foundation Board of Directors, our faculty staff, and our students. We know this issue well at Durham Tech. We did a study a number of years ago with Temple University that included seven hundred of our students, and we found that fifty percent of our students had experienced some level of housing insecurity. Twenty percent had experienced homelessness in the past year. No doubt, the pandemic has accelerated some of those trends. We want to be part of the solution in improving the housing stock of affordable housing in Durham. And we have a proposed project, if you look at the four or five that are on there, the Mosaic project is the Durham Tech project. We have Mosaic Nonprofit Housing, Affordable Housing Development Partner, as well as Bank of America Community Development Corporation, which is a subsidiary of Bank of America. That's our lender on the project that does affordable housing and mixed income projects. We have about six and a half acres of developable land on South Briggs, a great transportation route access to one forty-seven across from North Carolina Career Center, about point nine walking distance from our main campus, where we can build a hundred and twenty-four units of affordable housing that would be split between thirty percent, below thirty percent, and below sixty percent AMI. We've also had some good conversations with DHA about opportunities to use Section Eight based housing vouchers to create even additional thirty percent. What I want you to know about this development is that we subjected it to a rigorous community engagement process. We hired Partnership for Southern Equity to come in. They have experience doing this kind of work in communities and getting deep community engagement about what potential residents, community members live in the area want to see out of an affordable housing project. They came in, we did four different sessions, had great attendance, including Councilwoman Freeman's mom at one point, who joined one of our sessions, to look at what we needed to do, and actually revised our site plan based on community input and feedback, both in terms of the kind of amenities of the project, as well as this site plan itself. And so we are excited about this project. With this gap funding, together with a four percent LIHTC funding, we would be ready to move. We believe we have about twenty-five percent of those a hundred twenty-four units that we could make available for our students based on their eligibility under LIHTC, and then about seventy-five percent, which would be available to the community at large. So I just wanted you to know about this high priority project for Durham Tech. We want to be part of this solution with you and the community, and we appreciate your consideration.
Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, do we, do we know if, which item?
I'm unable to tell. We have to ask her directly in open session.
Okay. Madam Clerk, has she raised her hand to speak?
She's not raised her hand.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm going to now see if any of my council colleagues have any questions or... I'm going to now see if any of my council colleagues have any questions or comments. Mayor? Okay. Councilmember Williams?
Sure, thank you. The Madam Deputy City Manager Johnson, these long titles. Is there a timeline in which organizations that were identified to receive funding? Is there a timeline in which they have to make a commitment?
You mean the timeline for the U.S. Treasury, which is December 2024? That's we have.
You were saying there were some that had not committed yet because of the monitoring or something?
Oh, yes, those. So we have not, we are still working with those organizations. I think we have one that our General Services Department is working with, trying to find an alternative to help them with their monitoring, and that's from the Arts Grant. And then we have one that we think is going to withdraw totally. So there will be some additional funds if we cannot work those proposals out. Some may require, we may be able to find a fiscal sponsor for them to help with the financial reporting burden, but we we've not given up on those organizations yet, but we're staying to work with them.
Awesome. And and let me just say this, I've been listening in on the work you all are doing and the amount of support that you all are providing folks is just impeccable. Thank you for strengthening our community through these organizations by providing them that type, that level of support that they normally wouldn't have. You know, a lot of businesses went through that during the pandemic. So if you haven't heard, thank you. Thank you to you all. President Buxton, first, nice color tie. And thank you for the work that you all are doing and solving many, helping to solve many of the the issues that we collaboratively face in our community. Lastly, Ms. Johnson. So are we are we beholding to the process now? Because I know we identified, we identified the organizations, but this was the previous council, identify the process where we were identified organizations at which we were funded. Now we have this next tranche of money. Are we just locked in continuing funding these organizations that were not funded the first time or do we get to select the?
Absolutely not.
New process.
Absolutely not. So the organizations that were deferred, you all deferred them, I think, in hopes of collaborating with the county, leveraging our resources with the county. You, it's up to the pleasure of the council whether you want to revisit those proposals at this point or you want to move forward with other of your other ideas or initiatives and the others that are listed in the presentation. It was, and I guess I could ask those of you who worked on the subcommittee, is that what you were thinking in terms of deferring those for discussion at this point, that you would make that decision at this point based on if we were able to to leverage some resources with the county?
I I think we we, just as a states, I believe we said we would put, refer these because they were more aligned with what the county was focusing on. Colleagues, correct me if I'm wrong, but there was nothing concrete, if I remember correctly.
That's my understanding, yes.
Thank you.
O'Neil, sorry.
Thank you all for a great presentation, but more importantly, all the work that I know you all have put into making this happen. It required the hiring of additional folk and knowing on the contract side what that looks like, there is an enormous amount of work that has to go in to individualize all those contracts. So to think that we come back today and you all have executed 34 contracts and are actually getting that money out the door is is a momentous and commendable feat. That's 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 amazing work. And then the monitoring process, you know, that that's also going to be a challenge for all who will have to do that because at the end of the day, if our organizations are not successful in meeting the goals and objectives outlined by the federal government, they will be looking to get that money back. And so and once it is expended, if those organizations, for whatever reason, would not have that money back in the event that they are not able to comply with those regulations, which is why I I am thankful that those who are struggling with whether they can maintain that kind of system to kind of be answerable to, that they are reconsidering it. Because it is, it has serious implications when you talk about $22 million out there that we'll have to monitor over some years' time, make sure that people are doing exactly what they can and are capable of doing. And if not, then the taxpayers of Durham City will be advancing those funds back to the government. So I just want to, which is one of the reasons why, as I came into this process, I have to be honest, as a as an attorney and a former judge, I was really leery about doing all of those individual contracts because it's just fraught with the ability to fail and you not be able to catch that in a timely manner to recoup those funds. And so thinking about the fact that the city attorney's office was going to have to go through all of these contracts, along with all of the other work that they are now doing, it caused me a little bit of angst because that's a lot of work. It's a lot of work on the attorneys, it's a lot of work on your staff in addition to what you're always already doing. And I have people, tell people a lot of times, you know, you have about 2,500 people who work for the city of Durham and a city of 350,000. And most of the work that they do, we take for granted because your water's clean, your your streets are minimally and doing better in that area, but there's a lot of work that these people do every day. So I was a little concerned when they say, wow, we're going to get 30 nonprofits, individual contracts that they have to monitor for two or three years? That's a lot of pressure. And I wanted the city of Durham to understand that, which gets to my second part. Keeping that in mind, I do think that we have a couple of issues that we have made as a council, the forefront of our conversations, and that's affordable housing. When I got here, the city of Durham had already gone through RFP process and they were able to fund four, seven, four of the seven, four of eight projects that they had deemed ready to go and the city could check off. They were only able to fund four. And as we looked at that list, I saw Durham Tech is trying to do something that will put us on the map as one of those programs, right? A community college that will have housing. Who knows anybody else that's doing that? Nobody. Then when you look at the other three houses, we have folk who at least one of those have already began to develop, and this will be part two, I think, on the East Gear Street Residential. That's part two is Sandy Ridge Villas. There's another group that's a local group in this that is some local LGB that is minority and business owned local organization. And at the end of that, after talking with the county, the county is willing to help share that burden. And so the city officials and the county officials have come up with a way that we could possibly forgive these folk $20 million, taking half of our ARPA funds from each. So for me, that is a great balance because then you're dealing with brick and mortar, you're addressing housing needs at the urgency of now, and we're going to build that in conjunction with the county. And we'll still leave our, we won't put a whole lot more pressure on our city and counties to kind of monitor the daily day activity of NOM that that when you're doing the human services kinds of things, they won't have that press. So I'd like to, I'm going to push my attention and and what I can do to make sure that we fund those four housing efforts first. And then the other ones, there are some that I am partial to, but we can get into those details later because at least two of them, I think, I need to go back and look at what those are. But my first initial reaction is, let's build some housing, especially while we got the county ready to do that. And we also had the opportunity to to kind of make history in terms of supporting our community college, which is doing so well. We have the opportunity to to help female and minority owned development right here in our hometown to be able to do something in that space. So and there's one group that's already out there building, they're just looking for us to say, okay, you can do the second half. I I think for me, that's a win on all on the housing. And we're down to 10 million and counting.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Johnson, Councilmember Freeman?
Thank you. Councilmember Cabirro, I just wanted to agree that I think moving these projects forward is a great idea. I see no downside to putting additional funding into these projects that are are ready to go and I see no upside to waiting. So absolutely 100% support moving forward with this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman.
Council, Councilmember Johnson covered it. I was going to say the exact same thing.
Thank you. Did you have your hand raised? Okay, yeah. Mayor Protem and then Councilmember Halsey Hyman.
Thank you, Councilmember, and thank you, colleagues. I'm going to associate myself with everything the mayor said. I think she teed up perfectly. The notion, we should probably go big with this next tranche for a number of reasons. The mayor, I mean, nailed the bandwidth issues with monitoring and managing so many smaller, it feels weird saying a million dollars smaller, but y'all know what I mean, smaller projects when you've got a big chunk of money. I think the funding, the using 10 million to fund the affordable housing, the the pre-existent ones that we probably would have done had we had the money, funding it, I think, I think is a is a great idea and something we should seriously consider as a council. And I'll say with the rest of the tranche, I mean, I, you know, full disclosure, I've in my budget request, I'm asking for a significant down payment on on the Marshall Plan or Marshall type plan for legacy neighborhoods in our city. And and this pitch is, I hope it provokes my fellow council members to think about big transformative things with this money. One of the cool things about going to, you know, events like National League of Cities and U.S. Conference of Mayors, I thank the mayor for allowing me to attend this last one, is you hear your other colleagues, they're doing some stuff with ARPA money we hadn't even thought about, that we hadn't, you know, so it's good to get out and hear what people are doing, what, you know, things we thought we couldn't do, actually turns out you can do. So hearing some of the best practices from around the country. So I I would just pitch beyond the 10 million for the the housing projects that the mayor's already talked about, thinking about something big and transformative that forwards our values. I don't know when we'll see money like this again and, you know, aside from our regular tax base. So I would, I'm pushing for something that's transformative and generational with the rest of it. So I'm just putting that out there now. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you, Councilmember Cabirro.
Thank you. Councilmember Halsey Hyman?
I just want to say ditto, ditto, ditto. Basically, you know, with my academic hat, we have a lot of students who, first of all, insecurity, food insecurities and also housing, which is a deterrent sometimes to retention. So definitely agree with the housing piece. Thank you Durham Tech for that innovative strategy. And again, like Mayor Protem, like, let's go big.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. And then I think the manager also had something.
I didn't know we were at the point of throwing the ideas out, so I'll just add mine. You know, we we don't talk about small businesses a lot on this council. And I know that, you know, there's a lot of risk that goes into that. I'm on this council for a reason and I'm going to speak on that. So I would hope that my colleagues will be amenable to supporting a revolving loan fund or replenishing the lifeline that was provided when we were in the midst of the pandemic. There are still businesses trying their best to, and I mean, local small businesses, the criteria is already drafted, that are trying to just stay afloat. And these are the folks that are providing the local jobs. You know, these are the folks that we're trying to, you know, keep people employed and also the ones who generate, you know, curate that character for Durham. So we don't have to put a lot toward it, but I do hope we can consider that.
Thank you. Manager Page?
Thank you for an opportunity to say a few words. I would also like to thank the particularly the staff members, many of which are new to the organization, have been working on this since they hit, since they came in the came in the front door of of the 101 City Hall Plaza. So I wanted to publicly thank them as well as our city attorney and her signing staff to this team almost on a day to day basis to make sure Durham does it right. One of the things that was really important to us time wise, because you all rely on us to implement your policy, and that is what we come to work every day to do. And we're going to be having some conversations, trying to connect some policy direction, ideas together and make it work with the money. So today, we wanted to, we're very happy because if we can go ahead and allocate in terms of our working and our planning, $10 million toward these affordable housing projects, which were not eligible until the final rules of ARPA came out last year. So we didn't even know we were going to be able to use this funding for for that. But because these projects are shovel ready, it helps us know that we can be more successful for the Fed's timeline if we can match some of their their policies, which can be really stringent with what we're doing here on the ground. So we're going to take this conversation today as an allocation of $10 million toward affordable housing. Because I do numbers and I do them all the time, that does leave another, you know, 10, 12 million dollars plus that the council still has for consideration for for investing as we have conversations going through our budget, our CIP, our green equitable infrastructure dollars and making it work for Durham. And so I just wanted to want to say that. I don't know if the team has additional direction that you're looking for today, but just wanted wanted to say that as as the manager.
Thank you for that, city manager. I was going to suggest that after Mayor Protem made his comments, that just remember as you think about your budget request that you submitted, looking at those that this would be eligible funding source for. So you may want, as the manager said, think about, you know, allocating that as you go through that process. And then you don't, you have fewer dollars that are competing with the other departmental requests.
Councilmember Freeman, then Mayor O'Neil?
Thank you. I just had a question, just clarity wise. I'm realizing that we're saying 10 million, but I know it's 10 million and change would really be half. So do we need to say 11? I just want to be clear.
We do not need a specific number today. We just wanted a commitment to the projects and those will come back to you because they need to update the financials around those projects and so they will be coming back to you.
And then just secondly, I do want to make sure that this is going to be at the 100% not 70% level that we were talking about on the previous tranche.
Yeah. So so on the housing projects, we are, you know, we we know that those numbers have to, you know, that the financing sources have to match the project. So it would be further evaluated in terms of what that gap is. The city always comes in at the end of of the funding stack. And so we we that's why we wanted to have the projects here. We wanted to reinforce that we had gone through an RFP process, that these housing developers have been in that RFP process already and competed and are continuing to look at creative ways to develop their projects. So it was, you know, was important to us. It was about a year ago, I think it was February, was it February of 2022, when we were in this process? So we know we have some updates to do, but we're committed to all and we're working as collaboratively with the county to make sure there's enough funding in place from ARPA on both sides to deliver all of the projects.
And acknowledging that a dollar in February of 2022 is probably like 80 something cents from today, so just realizing like it may be more, I do want to make sure that it's clearly stated we should support moving forward with the number that is necessary to match that number previously supplied. And then also, I did want to double check, do we still have our revolving loan fund with community, I'm sorry, Carolina Small Business? Because I didn't know it was, it wasn't there. I thought we had one.
Yes, we do still have the loan fund from 2020. It is still approximately, still approximately a million dollars in that loan fund. You will recall last year, we rebooted it, we changed and reduced some of the requirements, changed some of the terminology, and we have made a few loans as a result of that. But we still have a lot of work to do. We we need to engage our businesses. We need to find out exactly what they need to be successful. But to your, to respond to what you say, we do have approximately $1 million.
So to that point, I do want to note. So to that point, I do want to note that there are a couple of things we can do. I know that there are more funds available now for small businesses with the SSBCI dollars available. I mean, I'm at the Rural Center, I can't not say it, that there are so many dollars that are available. And those matching funds that we can make available can go like four or five times further. And so even if we were to increase that 1 million to 2.5 million, it could actually do a lot to further the need or to cover the needs of our small businesses and businesses in general within the city. And so it would be good to hear some, I guess, feedback from staff on whether or not that's something we should look at or not. But I do note that there's a lot of capital available right now, and it'd be nice to maximize.
Thank you, Mayor O'Neil.
Thank you, Councilwoman Caballero. I just wanted to make sure that we are all clear that, you know, we decided those monies, we were saying 10 million at this point, is that, but giving them the option of increasing that amount based upon inflation. Is that, can we get a thumbs up on all that? So we're definitely looking to fund those four projects. We're starting them with an initial figure of 10 million, but keeping in mind, it may go up because of inflation, but they will let us know what that is. But saying, go ahead.
I just want a thumbs up for everybody. We're good.
So that JB can, I'm sorry, President Buxton can go out here with a smile on his face. All right, here we go. Thank you all. Great stuff. I am also, just in conclusion, I thank you all. That is just wonderful what you all are doing. I don't know that we could ever pay you all enough to do what you're about to undertake and what Attorney Kim's office has done. We look forward to this being transformational, and I am going to echo Mayor Protem. We need to go big with the remaining monies and make sure that we are not overtaxing you all and have some real stuff that we can put our hands on, 10 and 20. Not saying that all things are not, you know, we're just not going to get this opportunity, again, I don't think. So thank you. That would be my remarks.
Thank you. Really quickly, I had just one clarifying question around this. So yes to everything my colleagues have said. I know the staff has been incredible around this, so thank you. I've heard great things about your team out in the community and folks who've been having to work with you all and just the technical assistance you're providing people. It's a moment to be proud of our city staff. But we're 100% want to fund all four projects. I know some of that is based on also not just inflation, but on the county also committing. And so what happens if, you know, we're saying 10 plus some change, but what happens if we aren't going to get any county dollars? I just want to know where folks are on that.
So the way we have, the way we have to work in spaces that we've never been in like we are right now is we take the 10 right now and we go to the county to get the rest. And if those conditions change or these numbers change, then we come back and we, we're going to be with you all a lot. The mayor's just talking about it earlier, in March. And so we're going to be working on this every, every, every single day. But we have had great conversations with them, you know, if they're, they're committed. So we're gonna, you know, we're gonna take that, we're gonna take them at their word for now, and then if that changes, we'll be back.
Thank you. And I just wanted to thank President Buxton for being here. That's an amazing project as well. And yeah, but go, go big or go home, right? Then I'm passing on to the next person. I'm not sure who the next presentation is.
I think before we go to the next presentation, we'll take about a 10-minute break for human needs. Thank you all so much. That's great stuff.
Getting back to order. And I have the pleasure of having the lead of discussion on the Affordable Housing Deep Dive presentation on the Durham Eviction Diversion Program. So we're going to ask the legal aid of North Carolina Diversion and Eviction Program presenters. Thank you.
Can you hear me? Okay, there we go. Got to get a little closer. My name is Sarah Demato, and I am the project director of the Legal Aid of Durham's Eviction Diversion Program. Thank you, councilpeople and Mayor Protem and Madam Mayor for this invitation. Like a good lawyer, I will talk all day long about my case and my cause. And so I will try to just share with you some of the basic information about our program. Our program, as y'all know, is funded by the city. And so consider this perhaps a State of the Union report on our City of Durham Eviction Diversion Program. And so I want to, before I get started, introduce And so I want to, before I get started, introduce myself. Again, my name is Sarah Demato. I am, I've lived in the triangle all my life. I grew up in Hillsborough, went to UNC for undergrad, went to Central for law school, so lived in Durham. I live in Pittsboro now. I've lived in Raleigh. So I, while Durham, I don't live here, I did live here, I do consider myself a native of sorts to the triangle. So these issues of how housing affects us do mean a lot to me. We have also here Ashley Campbell, who is now the executive director of Legal Aid of North Carolina. Peter Gilbert is in attendance. He was the attorney who spearheaded this program when it started. And then Leon Horn is a supervising attorney with us, also in our program. So again, thank you for this opportunity to tell you a little bit more about what we do. I am going to talk a little bit about the history of our program. And then I'm going to spend the bulk of my time talking about what we're doing now with your money and the taxpayers' money for our program. And then I want to talk a little bit about where I hope we go. And I've heard, Madam Mayor, you call for us to go big, and I am inspired by that. So I'm going to put our ask in for more money throughout this program. And I hope that you can see through our results that we are good stewards of the city's money and that we are doing good things for the residents of the city of Durham. And then, of course, you know, if y'all have any questions at the end, you know, I will do my best to to answer those. The Durham eviction diversion program. There we go. Did this, no, that was backwards. Let's put it the right way. There we go. So the Durham eviction diversion program began as a partnership with the Duke Civil Justice Clinic and Legal Aid of North Carolina, in conjunction also with the Durham County Department of Social Services. And the primary goal of this program when it started was to avoid eviction judgments and to decrease the number of eviction filings. I'm going to talk about that a little bit more in terms of what that looks like in practice, but that is the primary goal. Some of the ideas that go along with that are trying to make sure that people, you know, they, if they stay in their house, ideally, we would avoid a filing in the first place. So the program started in 2017. There were only a few attorneys. I hear all kinds of stories about how many cases they all had to handle, sort of like how our parents were like, I had to walk to the school two miles in the snow. So when the project launched, there were, there were not a lot of attorneys, there was not a lot of staff on that project, and they still handled a lot of cases. Back in 2017, 2018, eviction filings were a lot higher than they are now, even a lot higher than they were in 2019 or 2020, before the pandemic started. So the eviction diversion program that we have in place is modeled after, there was, in Michigan, there were some eviction diversion programs. And so Durham took those ideas and modeled those programs, modeled this program after that. And one of the things I don't mention here, but I think it's important to know, is that other municipalities in North Carolina have modeled their programs after what we're doing here in Durham. So Raleigh is doing an eviction diversion program of sorts. Mecklenburg, excuse me, Mecklenburg, Mecklenburg and then Greensboro are all doing eviction diversion programs that are in some way, shape or another modeled after what we're doing here in Durham. So a lot of times, part of my job is hearing from other people across the state to say, hey, y'all have got this program, tell me about it. What's it look like? And that's because they see what we're doing, they see the impact that it has, and they want to do it too. So in that sense, Durham has been a real trailblazer in that regard, I believe. I will note that, and I've mentioned here, that diversion, at this point, it's really sort of a pipe dream. We try to, to hope that that's what we're going to do. We would like to be able to totally prevent somebody from being filed on and being evicted. But unfortunately, in this, in this environment, that's not happening as much as we would love for it to happen. And that, a lot of that is due to factors that are outside of our control, which I will address a little bit later down the road. And so unfortunately, so many people, if they get behind one month here in Durham, or if their landlord wants to sell their house, they are going to be filed on. There will be an eviction filing. Whether or not that case eventually gets resolved because the tenant pays the money or because the tenant moves out before the court date, that is left to be seen. But in most of those situations, somebody is going to get a court filing if they are still in possession when their landlord wants them to be gone. So we do our best, we try, when we have the opportunity to get cases before there's a filing, we do our best to try to prevent that filing. But once there's a filing after that, our main strategy is to ideally keep them housed or to prevent there being an eviction judgment on their record moving forward. So that's where we were. The initial funding came from $200,000 support from the city of Durham. There was a smaller grant, and there were four attorneys, and they committed to handling 420 cases per year. So that's kind of where we were going in 2019. And then let's take us to where we are right now. Right now, that current funding that comes from the city, there was an initial $500,000 for the three years of 2020 through 2023. And then due to ARPA funding, we got that additional $1 million for the two years, so 2022 and 2023. And so right now, the current staffing, there's myself as the program director, there are two supervising attorneys, there are seven staff attorneys, we hired four in the spring of 2020, and then we hired four more in the summer of 2022. Those four additionals that came on in the summer of 2022 were as a result of the courthouse clinic, ARPA funding project that, that the city graciously funded. We have five paralegals, one of those is a Spanish-speaking individual. I'm the only Spanish-speaking attorney on our staff at this point. And then we do have a community resource coordinator. The community resource coordinator's role was essential to the initial program. And what Kaz does is to connect our folks with coordinated entry, with the Community Empowerment Fund, with DSS, with DHA. So he is really the liaison in our organization for connecting folks with the resources in our community and also for building those relationships with those partner agencies. So this is where we are right now. And again, the money that funds this courthouse clinic came from the city, from those ARPA funds. And so this is where I go big, and I say, I want you to keep giving us that money, please. I think that you can see that our results show that right now, while we're bridging this gap in Durham between the folks who are facing eviction, while they're waiting for those projects that y'all approve to fund, while we're waiting for those to be present, we need something on the ground right now to keep people housed right now while we are waiting for these units to be built and this affordable housing to be available in our community. And so one of the ways that we do that is by providing what we call the courthouse clinic. We started this program, it was in full force at the end, let's say, July, August of last year. We have an attorney present in the courthouse on the third floor, two doors down for where the magistrate courtrooms are, and that attorney is there from nine in the morning until two o'clock in the afternoon. And we also have a paralegal there as well. So in those days, that is the prime time for small claims cases in Durham. Right now, we're averaging about, the dockets each week for small claims court, which is where, and I'll go, maybe I should have gone into the process first, but we'll go into that a little bit later, but the, when somebody is filed on, their first stage of the eviction process in court is in small claims court, and that's in front of a magistrate. And so those cases are all heard on the third floor in the courthouse. And right now, when those dockets are posted each week, we've got anywhere between 100 to 200 cases each week of evictions in Durham. So our clinic allows for people to, without having had any other ability to contact us or to go to any other organization, when they show up for court, they can meet with one of our attorneys or one of our staff in order to do intake. At that point, they are able to do, we're able to do on-the-spot intakes for most cases. And so if somebody is eligible for legal aid representation and time permitting, based on how the schedules work on those cases, in some cases, we are able to provide same-day representation for those individuals. That representation might just look like, hey, can we get a continuance for another week? And then that gives us time to, in a lot of cases, what it does is it gives us time to connect the tenant with resources in the community. Have you contacted DSS? Have you contacted Community Empowerment Fund? Have you, you know, thought about moving out? Those are the different things that we can do even with just a continuance of a week. And so we are able to do that same-day representation in some cases. In some cases, we're not able to. Obviously, you know, as an attorney, we have to, we have to make sure that we are diligent in sussing out our claims and making sure that we are upholding our professional responsibilities as it relates to representation of our clients. Most of the people who come to the courthouse clinic have a pending case in court. The other people who come to the courthouse often have just received a notice to vacate, and they want legal advice. If they're not eligible for our services, we do refer those individuals to the organizations in our community that we believe to do, depending on the situation, either pro bono work or referral sources for them to find a private attorney. In small claims, most tenants are not represented. In small claims, approximately, I think the statistics are about 90 to 95% of tenants do not have an attorney. And where that comes into play is really, really, in some cases, is as subtle as being able to get a continuance for two weeks because you're going to be moving out. So if I can just get a continuance for a week and turn in the keys, then I can avoid this judgment. Or my tax refund, this is what we're hearing right now, my tax refund, I'm going to get it on Friday. If I can get one more month, I mean, one more week, or, you know, we can, we can resolve this issue. So an attorney's presence allows for even something as, as basic as getting just another week of time. The other part about that, too, is that it allows us to, to raise defenses, habitability claims, things along those natures. But we need the time to be able to represent those folks and to develop their case. So that courthouse clinic, we have flyers up, they go out with the summons for the eviction filings in Durham. So when tenants do receive court papers, they receive a flyer that tells them that they can come to our, our clinic for additional advice. There's an email address that they can send their documents to, and that email goes to all of us on the team. And currently, we have at least one attorney in court each day, in addition to the attorney who's staffing the clinic. So that attorney is the one who's representing all of the cases for that day, and then you usually have two at this point. So we are at the courthouse every day for small claims. One of the other benefits that I've seen in going there is that we serve also sort of as an usher in, in, in the hallways there in the courthouse. A lot of times, traffic court line starts all the way at the end of the third floor, and it lines all the way up the third floor, the third floor, you know, all the way along. And people will see us there, and they're like, where do I go? And they're not our clients, you know, and there's no other sign. So we are often directing people to, there's traffic court here, this is your courtroom here for your small claims case, downstairs is where you're going to file the appeal. So we have a very constant presence with, on the third floor at, at this point. And then also, the other thing is that everybody, if you have a small claims case magistrate for eviction, then you, if the judgment's entered against you, you get 10 days in order to appeal that case. And it's a whole, what we call a de novo trial, which means you get to start all over again. And that's actually where we get, as lawyers, the opportunity to do the things like send out discovery requests, where we ask the landlord, please show me your lease, please show me all the notices. That's where we get to prepare counterclaims, we get to do that more intensive legal work. The past few months, we are averaging about 80 cases per week in that district court week, that's once a month in Durham. And so we are there in that capacity as well. And then, of course, if, if somebody's not represented by us, we can refer them down to the clinic, and then they can get assistance at that point. We've also gotten to the point, too, where the clerks, if, if there is somebody who has a question or needs assistance with filing an appeal, the clerks will refer people back up to the clinic for our assistance. The judges have also often referred folks to the clinic as well because they know that they can, a person can go there and get information about the eviction process. So we, I believe that we have a very strong presence, and I think that that is helping us create more relationships within the courthouse. Here's the little nuts and bolts about the summary judgment process, the eviction process. There's a lot of, you know, when somebody says, I got evicted. So if you ask me what that means, I, I would interpret that as you went to court, there was a judgment against you for eviction, and then you had to move out. But some people refer to being evicted as if they've just received a notice to vacate, they've been told they need to get out. So that, you know, that, that is, that, it's not an incorrect statement at all, it's just how we interpret what it means to be evicted, right? So, but summary judgment is the court process by which somebody is evicted. These trials in small claims, there's no right to discovery, so, you know, it's kind of loosey-goosey a lot of times. The trials, if there is a trial, it's only going to last, you know, maybe five, 10 minutes. It's really quick. Corporations do not have to have an attorney. They also have a mechanism in our general statutes that allows them to, to sort of win even if their client is not there. So that means that we have lots of tenants who show up, they show up, and their landlord's not even there to say, you know, hey, I gave this lease, I gave this notice. They don't have a person there to testify, and the attorney can't testify. And in those cases, the, there's still a judgment that's entered against them. Again, after that judgment is entered, then there's a 10-day period to appeal. The next part is what makes our jobs very difficult, is that after you appeal, in order to stay in your house while you are waiting to have your new trial, you have to pay that monthly rent directly to the court each month. So if you don't, then the sheriff can padlock you, change locks. You may have had the best case, you may have all of the best defenses, and if you can't pay that monthly rent bond to the court, then your landlord, your landlord can change locks and put you out. That is huge right now in Durham and North Carolina, especially for individuals who are actively seeking assistance through DSS, for example. They've got promissory notes from DSS that say, hey, we'll pay your arrears, but they're waiting on that check to come through, they're waiting for that assistance, and they can't pay that monthly rent right then. And so then they get locked out. That is not necessarily anything that we can change at this point because that's dictated by statute, but that is one of the things that in the past, where we've had rental assistance programs, rental assistance programs that worked really quickly helped alleviate that effect by providing financial assistance to folks at that first step so that they could at least stay in their house while they continue to, to represent, defend their case. Again, now, if you are in small claims and you lose and you don't appeal in those 10 days, then the landlord can get a writ of possession and lock you out. And so right now, also in Durham, and again, this is statutory as well, they, they must execute that writ. execute that writ within five days. And usually, the tenant only gets two days' notice before the padlocking. So what that means in theory and in practice is, in theory, they get two days' notice. In practice, what happens is those notices get sent out to the tenants by the mail. And so in some cases, the tenant doesn't know that there was a writ until the sheriff is at the door changing the locks. After the writ is executed, then they've got about a week to go back at least once to go get the rest of your stuff. So as I note here, this whole process from start to end, you could miss your February rent this month, have court next week, and then be locked out by the beginning of March. So when you take that and you combine it with the fact that rents are outrageous, they're increasing, the rental application fees are 50, $75, $100 per person, and you have to have perfect credit and, you know, know how to plant daffodils in their garden and all kinds of other, you know, interesting requirements. The folks that we have, that we represent with legal aid, they are struggling, struggling to find housing once they've been evicted, once the locks have been changed. So many folks are living in their car until they find a new place, or they're living with friends and family, or they're trying to get into the shelters. And this is one of the reasons right now why our shelters are full. Just a few kind of what's going on in terms of evictions right now. Non-payment of rent is the majority of the cases. In the cases where there is rental assistance available, these, some of these programs require a court filing in order for there to be expedited assistance. And so in those cases, with our assistance, and we're able to work with DSS and work with the landlord, in many of those cases, once that assistance comes through, then those folks are able to stay in their homes. So that, that piece of our work is, I think, really crucial when we have rental assistance funding, is to be able to have another partner that provides that legal assistance so that the two can work together. So when there is rental assistance available, we can preserve the tenancies more often. In another slide, I'll show you some of our outcomes. And it's very clear that when we had the Durham Rent Relief Program, our outcomes and our results at that time, we were preserving tenancies in 70 or so percent of those cases. Now that there's limited rental assistance right now, those numbers have dropped. Because if somebody's not able to pay their past due rent and their landlord wants them out, I can't preserve that tenancy unless the landlord agrees to some type of payment plan or agrees to, to accept that rental assistance. And that goes, that goes to the other one, where rental assistance is not available. So in some cases, this is, it's not available because, you know, DSS is one of our, our primary partners on this, and they have income requirements. There's also varied requirements that have to do with how long ago you lost your income or whether or not your tenancy is a sustainable one. And that's based on whether or not you have a job sometimes. So in some cases, that rental assistance is not available. And so a tenant is not going to be able to pay off any past due balance in order to stay in their home. Another situation that we see is a lot of landlords at this point are choosing not to accept rental assistance. One of the main reasons we hear is that they, you know, if a tenant has had maybe a history in the past year or so, likely due to COVID probably, then, then landlords are concerned, as they say, with their ability to keep paying moving forward. However, what we also know is that every time a tenant is evicted, the rate, the base rent of that property goes up. And each eviction causes those rates to keep going up. So in some cases, landlords are seeing that, you know, the market is really heavy at this point for people looking for housing. People are going to pay $1,800 a month for a one-bedroom apartment in Durham. You know, this tenant is paying $1,500. It's better for me to, to just cut my losses and try to run it out to somebody at a higher rate. So in those cases, there's, in most cases, most eviction cases, there's no, the landlord is not required to accept payment. And so in those cases, most of the time, those will eventually result in move-outs, either because of an agreement or because the legal line has ended and they're at the end of it, and then they get padlocked out. So that's the non-payment cases. The other cases that we see, some are the holdover cases. These were really big during COVID times because these were under the radar. They were not included specifically in the moratoriums that put a lot of evictions on hold. Holdover is, is, let's say, I've got a tenant on a, buy a house, and there's a tenant there, and they're on a month-to-month lease. We've had clients who've been living at a place for 10, 15 years, and their house, the owner sells the house and then says, you've got seven days to be out. So in those cases, our defenses are, are usually fewer because, you know, if the notice is adequate, there's not too much we can do in that situation. And in those cases, rental assistance doesn't matter as much. What matters in those cases to preserve those tenancies is legal assistance because we are the ones who are going to bring up legal defenses and also try to maybe work with an owner, a new owner of a new house. So, and then breach of lease, these are not as common in, in private housing. These are more common in subsidized housing. But this is like your, your failure to report an income or failure to, you know, unauthorized occupants. We are seeing a rise in this unauthorized occupants part, and that is in part because people have a sister who was evicted, and so they want her to, you know, they're offering that they stay with them for a little while. And then if it's subsidized housing, there are limits as to how long a person can stay in a person's house and whether or not you have to report it. And so people are losing their subsidized housing right now because they are offering their homes to family members who were recently evicted. So these are the main things that we're seeing in eviction cases right now. And again, most of the ones that we're going to see are for non-payment of rent. I would say probably about 80% of them are non-payment of rent. Our current outcomes, so I, I do want to put in a plug. I heard in the previous presentation about the monitoring that is required with this ARPA money. And I, I will say that Kishma James is the person that we've been working with, and those monitoring meetings have always been very positive and very helpful. And we have, we meet with her monthly, and we provide reports to her monthly as to what we're doing with the city money on that. And so I do appreciate her guidance in, in helping us with this program and monitoring us. The current, so under the program, we have current goals. Our current goals right now are to preserve the tenancy in at least 50% of the cases and to avoid eviction judgments in at least 70% of cases and to open up 840 cases. But that was in part, we're closer to 1,000 is what our, our goals are at this point. That had to deal with because of the timing of the program and stuff and it being prorated. So I, I think the next, the little statistics here that I have about our outcomes in December of 2022 and then May of 22, 22, also show the importance of rental assistance and also the importance of having legal assistance and rental assistance work together in the communities. And so in December, we preserved the tenancy 45% of the time. So that was below our, our goal when you looked at all of our cases. But if you just look at the cases where we go to court, we are preserving tenancies in 60% of those cases. We're avoiding judgments in 76% of those cases. And that either is because we win, and so a case is dismissed, or we negotiate a move-out agreement and the landlord takes a dismissal in those cases. Now, in December, we've had limited rental assistance. Pretty much the only rental assistance that we have available is through DSS. And so again, that, that is not as robust of a program as previous in the past few years, the ARPA money that's gone through. So if you look in May, May was when the Durham Rent Relief Program was still very vibrant. People could not apply for it anymore, but they were still receiving prospective rent, and they were also getting arrears paid off. And you'll see in that, in that situation, we did, we were able to preserve the tenancy in 72% of those cases because folks got rental assistance and then their landlords dismissed the case, or they didn't file at all. So that was, that was really critical at that point. It shows how that rental assistance helped keep people in their houses during the pandemic and then also moving forward. Some of the things I've already mentioned in terms of what we're seeing as challenges at this point, rental assistance for short-term income loss is very limited. DSS, of course, is, is over, understaffed and overworked and, and highly, you know, they've, there's a high demand. And so even to get a short-term assistance from DSS, it can take weeks. Churches are an option. Community Empowerment Fund now, with some of the money that the city has recently funded them, those are other options for short-term income loss. But a lot of times, what we see right now, we're seeing people being evicted for one month rent, one month rent, and those filings are coming, you know, two weeks after that missed payment. So there's not a lot of breathing room in that regard. We're also seeing, as I mentioned before, a high demand for rental units. So there's a lot of people here in Durham who want to rent in Durham, and rents are going up. I think we, we compared to, I think Raleigh and Durham right now in North Carolina had the highest rent increase over the past few years. We are also seeing, there's not a lot of folks who are accepting these Section 8 vouchers. So in many cases, we're able to preserve the voucher, but then we have quite a few reports of people who have been waiting and looking and looking and looking and looking for a landlord who will accept their voucher. And if they wait too long, if it's been six months, DHA, in many cases, can terminate that voucher. So if there's a, if they're not able to find a new place, then sometimes people are not only losing their housing, but they're also losing their voucher. Again, high cost of finding housing, I, you know, I'm, I, it's, it's one of those things where I, you know, I don't know that in general, unless you've been out there looking for a place to rent, that people are aware of how much it costs just to get into a place. And so application fees are non-refundable. And a landlord can have you fill out an application, they can have 100 other people on that list before you, and they don't have to tell you that you're not going to get that housing. So you pay $50 for yourself, $50 for your spouse, and you wait. Security deposits. We have also, you know, you have to show that you can afford three times the income. We have a recent situation where we realized that a teacher in Durham barely, barely can show that they can afford an average rent in Durham, just barely. Previous eviction filings, again, one of the things that also is not as well-known, every single filing against a tenant in North Carolina stays on their residential record. They could have been taken to court 15 times and won every single time. And when their next landlord checks up their residential history report, they will see 15 eviction filings. In North Carolina, there's not a mechanism at this point to erase those from a person's residential history. So every filing in that sense matters. Past due balances, and again, rental arrears, those are also things that somebody might move and they avoid that court judgment. But then now, when they try to seek new housing, they check in on the previous landlord, previous landlord says, no, they owe $10,000, and then the new landlord's like, yeah, no, I'll pass. So those are some of the things that we are seeing. The other part is habitability. We do have, in some situations, people are staying in housing that is subpar, that is, you know, there are a lot of maintenance issues, plumbing issues, mold, we hear a lot of that. And they don't want to or can't move because they can't find another housing opportunity at that point. So, so that, and that, the effect of that on a family, when you have kids who, there's no water, or there's heating bills right now because there's, you know, substandard heat in some units, you know, and a family is paying, you know, $800 to $1,000 a month in, in electrical bills, well, that's going to cut into the amount that you're able to pay for your rent. So those, that's the main things that we're seeing right now as to why folks in Durham at this point are having a hard time finding housing and staying housed. Just to talk a little bit briefly about this, y'all are quite aware, again, I've already mentioned DSS quite a few times, but they do send us referrals, we refer to them. That is a relationship. Of course, if we are able to, to refer people to them for rental assistance, then we are able to usually negotiate with the landlord to see if they'll accept that, that assistance and hold off on the eviction. Durham Housing Authority, you know, last year, when the Durham Rent Relief Program kicked off, we did a day-long clinic there in order to help folks get into the system for that assistance. We also have a good relationship with the general counsel at DHA so that, that helps us facilitate, you know, if there's an issue with finding, you know, a person's voucher or, you know, anything. So we have a really good relationship in that regard, and we're planning an outreach event in a, in another month or so where we'll do a housing clinic. We're hoping to do it at McDougald again, but we might, we might take it over to Cornwallis Road. So that relationship is also very important for us. Housing for New Hope, again, we, we regularly work with them. Community Empowerment Fund, we had a meeting last week. I saw that y'all have funded them and given them some money to help for some rental assistance through the ARPA funds. And so now we have also helped establish a referral network with them so that we can send people to them and they can send people to us. And then again, Alliance, a lot of times what we'll do with Alliance is working, especially in order to, if we need to do what we call a reasonable accommodation request, you know, somebody needs extra time to move because they're disabled, you know? So sometimes we'll be able to reach out and ask for that assistance. We also do a lot of work with the city, I mean, the law schools, Duke Civil Justice Clinic and the interns, and then with Central, which on our team, and I know Madam Mayor is a Central alum, as am I, and as is a few of the other attorneys in our office. And I will say that that partnership, of course, is near and dear to me because, you know, if you talk to lawyers in, in Durham and in the Triangle, you know, it's the Central grads who are in the courtrooms and doing this work. And so I like to think of our program as an incubator of sorts for Central Law students. We work a lot of times in conjunction with the Civil Justice Clinic at Central because if there's an individual who we're not able to represent, then we can, we can send to them. So, yes, ma'am.
Yes, just want to ask, how much longer is your presentation?
Oh, I'm, I'm almost done, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you.
Here we go, right into the future. The, where we are, I mean, the, I'll just, I'll go big or go home, right? And the idea of, again, the affordable housing initiatives that y'all mentioned, that those initiatives are going to impact evictions. Because if somebody has a house that they can go to, then that's going to make it easier for them to avoid eviction and find housing because they're going to be able to find housing if their landlord wants to sell a house, for example. So that is really important. As, I think that as our programs work together, the fact that the fact that we can keep people housed until some of these other initiatives that Durham has going on, until they really start to come to fruition. So it would be my ask, again, that when you look at our numbers, that you'll see that we've been good stewards of the city's money in this regard. We have done, I believe, a good job keeping folks housed in Durham when we can. We work and network with the agencies that provide rental assistance, and that's an important consideration. And so it would be my hope that as y'all are considering this next round of ARPA money, that you consider funding us at least at the same level that we have been funded at in order to continue to bridge that gap in the affordable housing crisis in Durham. So, and then the other things you can talk about later.
Thank you for your detailed presentation. I'm going to ask for questions of my colleagues. I am going to acknowledge Councilmember Williams first.
Thank you. So beyond the idea that this entire system is set up for the actual tenant to fail, and those are my opinions for the record. I want to ask the hard question. What are your suggestions beyond a Band-Aid fix? And that could be anywhere from, you know, us having a lobbyist in Raleigh to what more can we do other than, you know, just an additional week? Or the temporary support? Because this is not sustainable, and we need something more sustainable, and we need to be addressing this right here.
Absolutely, and that's a good question. And I will put an asterisk beside it and say that because I'm employed with Legal Aid of North Carolina, we do have certain restrictions and certain comments that we can make. And so I will say that so much of what we're experiencing right now is a result of the statutes that are in place. So so many of the programs that we might want to implement, while there is still a statutory framework that requires, it's essentially five days' notice for an eviction. So somebody can get the papers on their door today for court next week. Continuances don't happen very often, so we're bound by what's in the general statutes as to how much time these cases take. You know, as I mentioned before, in terms of the writs of possession, the statute says that the sheriff shall serve it within five days. So there's little that we can do on the ground to change that. So that is, I think, one huge thing. The other part about it, which is one of those things that is not very concrete, I wish I could say concrete, but when we understand fully that this could happen to any of us at any time, I think it changes that perspective. And so we have to get to that point where we realize and understand that missing one month's rent can put you at risk, and that if you don't have those community resources and family resources and generational resources, if you don't have those available right now, you could be out on the street.
So last comment for me, and I do know about that very well. Just to sum it all up, rents are rising. Home ownership is getting tougher. You have to have two to three times the amount of the rent as a security deposit. Am I accurate so far? And also, you have to go through a clearance check. All right. So we're in trouble.
Well, one of the other things that we've seen too, in that same vein, is that recently, well, in the past year or so, a lot of our Durham residents who were facing eviction, because the rents were going up, they decided, hey, I'll go out to Vance County. I'll go to Granville County, I'll find housing there. Our office in Durham, we also go to Vance, Granville, Person, Caswell, Franklin, Warren. And I always miss another one. And now our, the clients who we're representing out there, they can't find housing either. And so Durham's lack of affordable housing is expanding into the areas around us as well.
Yeah, and I won't be ignorant to, these are part of the growing pains of a growing city. But I do think that in addition to facing this reality, that we need to put some energy into how we can create a community that is more supportive and a sustainable, through a sustainable lens. And I'd like to maybe speak with you guys at a later time about what that may look like in your line of work.
Absolutely, I think other cities recently have done. For example, Greensboro at this point has converted a parking lot into a safe parking area for folks who are living in their cars, and that lot is monitored by law enforcement, and there's like a portage on. Other cities have offered lockers that have allowed people to store their belongings in them. So there's some things that can be done acutely, but those are the Band-Aids, right? And so the idea is that we don't need to have people living in their cars.
Yeah, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I look forward to continuing.
Absolutely.
Member Williams, I'm going to acknowledge Councilmember Javier, then Freeman, then the mayor.
Thank you, good to see you, Sarah. I spent a fair amount of time last winter in eviction court, and I did it so that I could see what the process was and to have a better understanding. And I really want to thank you and your team and the folks at Central. When folks can't, so a lot of our undocumented folks can't be served by Legal Aid. And if you look at a lot of the folks who are getting evicted, who were in subpar housing to begin with, but at least they had a roof over their head, it is our Latino neighbors. Many folks can't access the same, maybe not. It's not good enough, but they can't even access it. They can't access the supports that are out there. And so I know that Central often represents those residents. They've been a lifeline for that community, and so I have a lot of deep gratitude for them. I definitely think we have to figure out some form of rent assistance. I know that there's folks working on a proposal that quite frankly is way more than we can afford. But when I think about housing, I think we're going to have to do everything. I think we have to look at land use, I think we have to look at building more units, we have to have rent assistance, we have to have eviction diversion, and we have to have every piece. I've heard folks say we need a day shelter, right? So that folks can go shower and have a P.O. box because many folks who are unsheltered, if you don't have an address, you can't even apply for a job. I am in the odd situation of being both a tenant and a landlord. I rent, and I rent my house out, and there are some things that folks can do. I did not ask for a credit report. I asked for one month's deposit. I understand I'm taking a risk on it, but it's what we need our neighbors to do. And folks who are smaller, these are the small things that one can do that do actually help folks out. You don't need to have three months of rent. It's a hard thing to do when you're thinking about, I don't know anyone who has $4,000 lying around, right? Or very few folks who have $4,000 lying around. So I'm just putting it out there because I think there are small things that are beyond government, right, that folks can choose to do. And it's a risk, I understand that, I live it every month. But it's still something we decided to do because we had a house. We charge less than we need to for market rate housing, and it's something else we could choose to do. We're not using our property to completely be greedy and make a profit. We're doing it to hold on to an asset when we're ready to be back in it. And I hope that other folks in Durham also have that attitude. I understand it's counter to the system we are in, which actually, you know, is a system of greed and exploitation. That is a conversation for another day. But I just want to say thank you, and I hope that we continue to fund you all at the level that I've seen. It has been a tremendous support for folks in Durham. It is absolutely necessary, and it's way cheaper to help keep folks in their current housing than to build new housing, even though we also need to do that. But it is cheaper, and that's one of the reasons we did the eviction diversion is because we saw an opportunity.
Thank you, I'm going to acknowledge Councilmember Freeman, then our mayor, and then Mayor Protem, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Caballero, for covering a lot of what I would have said. And I did have a few questions in there, and I did want to say to Councilmember Williams, we should probably catch up because I feel like the Tenant's Bill of Rights is the best way to advocate forward because if we don't get rights in place that actually allow a tenant to stand, like to stand in a courtroom and say, these are my rights? I don't think, I mean, it's, the system is set up way lopsided, and that's the best thing we can do. I did want to note, or ask, are you collecting copies of all of these lease agreements? And are they housed someplace that students could do research on them?
We collect, we have a lease bank, but most of that information is going to be specific to the individual client, and so...
And maybe it's a conversation to have with a research institution so that, you know, no personal information, but to at least have the language that's being used in the transition. As Councilmember Caballero was mentioning, as folks move to the application fee and to, these are all things we could be working to combat if we know more about what's in that lease. And then I didn't know if you were collecting demo data. I didn't see any in your report or your presentation. And so I just want to make sure you do state, you know, who you are serving because I feel like that's often missed.
Absolutely. The demographics are part of our monthly report that we send to the city. And so I did, as it, for 2022, in terms of our demographics for the year of the cases that we opened, and I think we, it was a total of about 850 cases or so. Of those, 63 identified as white, 626 identified as black or African-American, and six as Native American, and some other race as 61. So an overwhelming, close to, what, 70% of the individuals that we represent are identifying as black or African-American.
626, that's...
Yes, ma'am.
And I just want to also know, are you collecting the demographic data maybe on landlords? Whether it's a large corporation or a single, you know, property owner or multiple property owners? I think that this would all be really good to kind of tie together what we've been saying, what we know kind of tangentially from a lot of stories in a way that actually gets us to the point where we can make the case that this is a problem for some in our legislature.
Right, at this point right now, we could probably break that down for you. It's not something that we have been reporting on so far. I do know that other organizations, especially DataWorks based out of Durham, I do believe that they collect that data specifically.
And I do want to say that I appreciate the public education on evictions, and I want the public, the general public to know, as Councilmember Caballero mentioned, that Legal Aid cannot represent undocumented folks, but they do offer a, like a substantial training to nonprofit organizations that face people who are undocumented, and it is very helpful to have that information at your fingertips. And so if you have not had the training, I want to encourage you to reach out to them and get the training so that your staff is well-aware of the tenants', I won't say rights, but they're, I mean, they have advocates and they have ways to respond to questions that are asked of them. So I just want to make sure that that is clearly stated. And I am adding, I'm just noting in my list, and my list keeps growing for this Tenant's Bill of Rights, I will say. The erasing the rental eviction judgments, figuring out something for the DSS arrear systems because we know that that delay is going to live there. And then, I'm just making sure, yeah, those are the three that I added. And the lockers and the showers with the parking lot is something I am like specifically focused on. I feel like maybe I should be pulling you all in. I think I shared with counsel that there's a campus study right now for urban ministries and my church, St. Philip's, trying to figure out what it looks like. And I feel like this should be a part of that conversation because it is, it's, the way that things are in this state, this one program is one that I will say that the program's goals don't actually address all the things that should be looked at. And even though you're not meeting those goals, it is very clear to me that without this type of program in place, there are so many more gaps. And this is a like semi-plug in a way that it's so hard to even like think about what it would look like without you there because that over 800 people without an advocate in that courtroom have no way to know exactly what it is they should do and shouldn't do. And I want to say that the 1,200 others that they speak to about what you told them, I mean, it just kind of, it's the gift that keeps on giving because you're sharing information.
Absolutely, and that raises a good point. Because of our presence now, you know, just like any program, it takes a little while to build up the word in the community. And so now what we're seeing more often actually is a lot of our, almost all of our clients are coming from the courthouse clinic as opposed to through the general Legal Aid helpline. And another portion of that are clients who we represented maybe last year. And then they had us helping them at that point, and they still have my number in their cellphone. And so then when they get a notice to vacate, they call me. And so I anticipate that as we continue to build that constant presence and that we've had this program, the amount of people that we will continue to serve will increase. We've also, we have a Facebook page where we will do some live videos on that. Legal Aid will do live self-help, you know, how to represent yourself, what you need to know in eviction. We just published an eviction guide that gives individuals resources. And that's, even if we're not able to represent somebody, those are resources that we're able to give to everybody.
And there was one last thing I was thinking, as soon as you said the guide, I lost it. But there's a piece of, I'll come back, I'll just come back.
I'm going to acknowledge our mayor, Mayor Protem, and then Councilmember Javier.
Just very briefly, thank you so much for being a Central grad, law school grad. I just have a quick question, and I think Councilwoman Freeman. I know if you're in the courthouse every day, you know the players. Are there particular landlords that you see more often than not? Are there repeaters? If you don't feel comfortable saying their names, but if you could give us an idea whether, you know, a lot of people will take up a lot of space on a docket. I used to supervise those magistrates and used to have some of those dockets in district court once it was appealed to. And I will agree that that law, the law in that area, in my opinion, is very skewed towards not helping poor people maintain housing. So I saw that firsthand, but you always had some frequent flyers that you could count on. Are you still experiencing that?
Yes, we, there are some landlords who, in my opinion, use the summary adjecement process as a debt collection tool. And so they are more likely to consider that if they file and they, somebody's now facing eviction, that that will be the impetus that that person needs in order to come up with the money to pay the rent to avoid the eviction. And then what happens in those particular cases is that, because of the timing of the court, although that particular landlord, by the time you get to court, they could demand not just the rent that they missed, but then whatever month, like let's say we're at court today, and you missed January rent, the landlord could demand February rent as part of the, you know, to dismiss the case. But then sometimes they don't. And so then they'll dismiss the case, but now the tenant, because they sold everything they had, they, you know, borrowed every bit that they could, now they can't pay February rent. And so then, now they get another filing for February, and they are in a cycle. And that cycle, once you get behind, and the landlord that you are leasing with, they have a right to do that. But at the same rate, it's one of the ways that some tenants get trapped in a cycle because they're using everything that they can get in order to get out. And so that is, we do see certain landlords who do use that more regularly. And sometimes those are also the ones in their defense as housing providers that are actually more willing to work with us or work with a tenant in terms of coming up with that rental assistance. But at that point, sometimes the number of filings against that tenant, you know, it essentially means that that tenant's going to really struggle to find housing anywhere else at that point. So we do have, we do have that as, you know, we see that a lot. And then we also have not any specific landlord in general, but the more, you know, common apartment complexes that are held by, you know, LLCs. So you can't identify what the name of the apartment complex is by the name. We see a lot of breach of lease cases from them. So and those are the cases where it's, they might be one month, and then you're, there's no defense for a tenant at that point, like, you know, saying, you know... there's no defense for a tenant at that point, like, you know, saying, you know, my mother died last week is not a defense for why you couldn't pay the rent. And then in a lot of those cases, the landlord does not have to accept the rent, or they won't accept partial payments. And so those are, I think, are the two, you know, the, the ones that might be smaller landlords, but, but use that as a way to collect the rent. And then the other ones that are just larger corporations that, that don't, they, they go by their lease more so than, in some cases, the relationships with folks on the ground.
I'm going to acknowledge Mayor Protem and then Councilmember Javier. I'm also going to ask my colleagues to just let you know that we're coming on 5 o'clock and we have to also be in closed session.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you so much for the, the great work. I'd like to, I want to totally affirm what you said about other cities asking about how Durham is doing this. You know, it, it's one thing to, you know, do water and sewer and fix potholes to pick up garbage, but it's a different kind of swag to be able to talk about spending municipal money on eviction diversion, having an immigrant defense fund, you know, all the things that we have going on in Durham. It's, it, you know, it's, there aren't many moments you get to kind of brush your shoulders off in this kind of work, but this kind of work is, is one of those on Durham. So I want to thank you for that. As long as I'm a council member and have a vote, I will always in perpetuity support funding eviction diversion to answer your earlier query. Secondly, I do want to say also to speak, and this is it, speak to your point about the eviction filings. I don't know if you heard our discussion about our, passing our legislative agenda, but one of the things we've asked our, our delegation to spend the precious political capital that they do have in Raleigh on is leaning in and drafting legislation to allow those filings. I, I had no idea that actually, you know, notwithstanding the disposition of the case, that the filing was still there and how burdensome that can be to folks. So just to, I don't know if you heard, but we are asking our delegation, among other things, to lean in on that and pursue legislative relief when it comes to eviction filings.
Thank you.
So hopefully, we'll see.
Yeah, I've, I've heard that there's some good movement in that regard, and it's such a, you know, it's, it's one of those things that benefits the tenant. 10 years down the road, the landlord, there's no, you know, reason why the landlord needs to keep that on the record or anything. So it's one of those things that has a really strong and direct impact on a tenant. It doesn't really affect anyone else.
I'm asking our colleagues at the North Carolina League to, municipalities to lean in on that as well in their legislative exploits. So thank you so much. Thank you, Councilmember. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Javier.
I'm good.
Okay. Councilmember Johnson, and then we're going to wrap up.
Thank you, Councilmember Hyman. I just wanted to thank you for coming today and your colleagues for being here and for doing this program and recognize just the incredible growth that it's had over the last few years. And I hope that we can continue as a city to support the program and continue to expand it. You know, COVID, despite, you know, well, who knows if COVID will ever be over, but I think it highlighted a lot of the inequalities and challenges that people face in the system by, you know, making them worse for a while, but they, you know, it's still pretty intense out there for people trying to find affordable housing. And there's no signs of the economic situation that we're faced with getting any better for low-income people. So we need to continue to invest and, and support these kinds of programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. My contact information, I believe, is at the end, so if anybody wants to reach out, emails best, then feel free to do so. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that rich information. Moving on, we have, coming up next, our Go Durham presentation by Director Sean Egan. Have a way.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Protem and members of the City Council. My name's Sean Egan. I'm the Director of Transportation for the City of Durham. So I'll move right into the slide presentation. I know you've had a busy day, so I'll try to keep the presentation moving. So we have seen throughout the COVID-19 pandemic how transit can be critical for the essential workers who keep our community healthy and strong. We continue to provide personal protective equipment and fare-free service to aid in our community's recovery from the pandemic. Consistent with the city's Carbon Neutrality and Renewable Energy Action Plan, we are moving forward with the electrification of our fleet. And you can see here the benefits we are already seeing as well as major milestones ahead of us. We thank this council for approving the design contract prepared by our partners and General Services for the Durham Station renovation project in December of 2022. We're excited to move forward with this transformative project for our transit hub. Our senior shuttle addresses the importance of access to fresh foods for residents in senior living communities who have limited transportation options. And you can see that we launched this in 2022 with five communities, and we're continuing to grow and see significant interest in this program. The award-winning Go Durham comic is part of our effort to improve outreach and engagement in our community, particularly among families and youth. Our comic book stories also emphasize what we know to be true, that bus operators are heroes. So by population, the City of Durham is the fourth-largest city in North Carolina. But our transit system has the second-most ridership in the state. This is the clearest demonstration of how much Durham residents count on transit for their daily transportation needs. It also indicates a strong appetite for more and better services we can provide thanks to support from the Durham County Transit Plan. The remainder of the presentation shows key performance indicators we have established for the Go Durham system. City of Durham, Go Triangle, and Go Durham operations staff meet monthly to review progress and identify opportunities to improve performance in these indicators. Safety is our top priority, so we start with these KPIs. We track incidents at our Durham Station Terminal, where we have nearly 12,000 daily boardings, as well as onboard incidents on all of our routes across the system. As shown here, rates are consistently below target, but we continue to develop training and customer engagement tools to reduce the frequency of safety incidents on our system. I addressed this body in the fall of 2021, when there had been a number of recent operator assault incidents. Improved training and coordination with law enforcement have helped to limit the number of assaults since we spoke then to one incident in April of 2022. However, as we know, one, one incident is too many. What you can also see here is that the majority of the onboard incidents are minor, general disturbances or rule violations, such as playing music without headphones. Note that in September of 2021, as we look at crashes that were preventable, we had zero preventable crashes. We are working to make that a regular feature rather than the exception that you see in the report here. We've also created a million-miler program to recognize bus operators who have in their careers logged 1 million consecutive miles without a single preventable crash. Due to the importance of transfers at Durham Station, the target for on-time arrivals at Durham Station is 99% or better. For all time points, our target is 90% or better. We have some work to do to get these numbers up and improve the timeliness of our service for our riders. The red line here shows scheduled hours and is used to measure the share of published 2020 service levels provided, taking into account that our announced service reductions due to staffing shortages. We are consistently around 100% of what we have, of the reduced levels that we have shared with our community. But as you can see here, throughout much of fiscal '22, we were at around 81% of our budgeted levels. So while we have the budget to be able to deliver more hours of service without the staff, without the bus operators to drive those routes at those frequencies, we're consistently under-delivering our service. We've made some significant improvements since the end of fiscal year '22. We've been adding staff, and we're currently at about 87% of our 2020 service levels. And with the restoration of 30-minute service on our Route 7 beginning on February 18th, will bring us to 90% of our 2020 service levels. I had the pleasure earlier today to meet with some of the most recent graduates from our training program and thank them for making these service restorations possible. The reliability of our fleet is one of our standout performance areas. We've set an aggressive target of 20,000 miles between failures, and we consistently exceed this target. Keeping the fleet in a state of good repair is critical to avoid service disruptions that can impose a significant hardship on our riders. A major change we made in fiscal year '22 was to add a new executive position, Director of Customer Engagement at Go Durham. Since taking on this role, Sangee Duda has brought a strong focus to addressing customer complaints timely and using customer feedback to improve training and procedures to provide a better customer experience. On the top, you see the passengers per revenue hour, what I like to think of as a measure of how crowded our transit system is. This measure continues to climb. Most peer agencies, while we're approaching 30 passengers per hour here, most of our peers have rates in the teens. And so we see additional service frequency and new crosstown routes funded by the Durham Transit Plan as excellent opportunities to reduce crowding and improve the customer experience. Our focus today is on advancing major capital projects such as Durham Station and our better bus improvements, while continuing recruitment and retention to restore 100% of 2020 service levels and prepare for expansion. Anyone in our community interested in joining the team can visit goderhamtransit.org/careers and learn about our pay, which rises from $18.54 per hour to $19.86 per hour in the first six months, and is paired with generous health care and retirement benefits for the whole family. We're also upgrading our fleet and planning for a new operations contract managed by the city that is designed to incentivize significant improvements in the KPIs presented to you today. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Director Egan. Questions, colleagues? Great. Just one comment, because I know we got to go. We, we do get a fair amount of, I may not say we, some of us are getting complaints from some drivers that they are getting, you know, they're in some uncomfortable situations with, with passengers. But what concerns me is their response after that. And that's, you know, I tell my manager, but they tell me to, you know, shut up and take it or whatever, blah, blah, blah. There are two sides to every story. This is just something that recently came up to me. And how, how are we dealing with those matters?
So I've heard similar feedback. It came up, we had a public meeting at Durham Station a week ago yesterday, and heard similar feedback from our operators who attended the meeting. We had our Director of Operations there who said, if you're not getting a satisfactory answer from your supervisor, then bring it to the Director of Operations, bring it up the chain. We need to hear about these issues. We need to make sure that these issues are getting addressed. So if you're not satisfied with how your supervisor is addressing this concern, escalate it, because we want to hear about this. We need to address these issues, and so make sure that your voice is heard.
Thank you. All right, I'll pass on to Councilmember Johnson. Thank you, Director Egan.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. I believe I'm next, doing Item 53, our presentation on single-use plastic bags. And I've got a number of folks signed up to speak. I don't know if you all want to go in a certain order or what. Okay, so yeah, feel free to have folks come up as they would like.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Manager, City Council. Thank you for having us here today. We know you've had a lot of important considerations, so we appreciate your time and attention. This is an important matter impacting Durham residents, businesses, and our environment. So I'll introduce myself. I'm Madeline Vitale. I'm the Senior Program Officer and Grants Manager for Don't Waste Durham. And I'll introduce our presenters today to talk about the 10-cent bag fee proposal. Don't Waste Durham is a Durham-based nonprofit, and we're based, we established in 2017, and we're dedicated to creating solutions to prevent trash through education, advocacy, and innovation. And as you may know, we've been advocating for a 10-cent bag fee at restaurants, retailers, and grocery stores in Durham for several years. And we'd love to see Durham join over 400 other cities across the country that have passed similar legislation. We've seen that this is an extremely effective tool in dramatically reducing single-use plastic bags, litter pollution in communities, especially at low-income and minority communities, while still allowing for consumer choice. This has the potential to save Durham businesses and city government significant money, and we see it as a win for the Durham economy, a win for Durham residents, and for our shared environment. So as you may remember, in August 2019, we bought our proposal to the Environmental Affairs Board, and they passed the proposed fee with a unanimous resolution. In October 2021, the proposal was considered by the Joint City-City Committee. And November 2021, city and county attorneys carefully considered our legal memo, and we established that the city has the authority to enact such a fee. Since then, Don't Waste Durham and the Duke Environmental Law and Policy Clinic teams have been meeting with city council members, some of you here today. We thank you for your time and feedback. We've connected with city and county staff, attorneys, and commissioners, and have been incorporating their feedback. We've also been gathering more data, including speaking and learning from other community leaders that have experience with similar legislation, both in North Carolina and in other states. And we've also been continuing our Boomerang Bag Fee, Bull City Boomerang Bag Program, which provides reusable cloth bags for free in an equitable manner to shoppers who cannot afford to pay the fee or did not bring their own bag when shopping. So with that, I would like to introduce the Duke Environmental Law and Policy Team. They've put together a great presentation for you today, and they're going to address how equity is built into our proposal, some of the negative impacts of single-use bags in Durham and beyond, and how our proposal supports the city's strategic plans and sustainability goals, as well as some ideas for implementation. This team has worked very hard in representing us and serving as legal and policy advisors, and they have a wealth of information, and they've compiled evidence-based support for this proposed ordinance. So our team includes Professor, Professor Michelle Nolan, who's the Clinical Law Professor and Co-Director, Dr. Nancy Lauer, who's a Lecturing Fellow and Staff Scientist at the clinic, and clinic students Lily Hunter and Kat Taylor. And you may also be receiving some comments from other local groups, such as North Carolina Central Students, the LRB Creek Waterset Association, and Keep Durham Beautiful. We look forward to your additional feedback and collaboration so we can ensure that this proposal becomes a successful and effective and equitable ordinance. So I'll turn it over to the Duke team.
Could you, sorry, could you repeat your name?
Oh, sorry. Madeline Vitale.
I don't have a card for you. Would you mind filling one out over at the clerk station when you get a chance? Thanks.
Thank you so much for that kind introduction, Maddie. I do want to take a moment to let you know, we will be giving you the abridged presentation today. And so if you have any questions about the slides, if we're going over something, please be sure to bring it up in questions. We'd love to support you, and we also want to be very respectful of your time. As Maddie mentioned, we are one of Duke's 11 law clinics that are working to advance equity and justice through Durham. You heard about the clinic that supports the housing eviction program to prevent that. And so. And so our clinic is focused on environmental policy. And we're going to talk today about advancing Durham's goals of plastics policy for Durham. And I'm going to pass it over to Lilly to talk about the importance of this work and its impact on our community.
Right, so as Kat rightly said, basically the entire foundation of this entire proposal comes down to equity because while we are an environmental clinic, at the end of the day, what we want to do is provide the most positive benefits to the community that we can. And so, this is something where we recognize that there have been concerns with how this ordinance would be implemented in an equitable way, but we hope to show through kind of explanation of this ordinance that not only is that possible, but just by virtue of the ordinance existing, it seeks to ameliorate a lot of equity problems that exist just because of how plastic production negatively affects low-income and communities of color specifically.
Thank you, Lilly. I'm sorry to skip through so many of Lilly's amazing slides. Please be sure to check out the statistics she's compiled on equity throughout the United States and also equity as it applies to Durham County. We're going to dig into the proposed ordinance, as Maddie mentioned. It is a 10-cent fee on every non-reusable bag. We developed this ordinance over the course of three years in collaboration with Don't Waste Durham and many other stakeholders. We analyzed over six different policies in cities around the United States to learn what other cities were doing, what they were trying, what's out there. And we spent a lot of time deep in conversation with Durham businesses and Durham stakeholders like the Neighborhood Advisory Board to understand what concerns are relevant to the Durham context and how we can craft this ordinance to really fulfill that. We want to highlight some key recommendations that are proposed to be part of the ordinance. One is identifying and tracking metrics. That will enable you and the Solid Waste Department to make sure this policy is adaptable. So if you notice that something needs to be changed, it'll be easy to tailor and you'll have the data necessary to do that. We also recommend utilizing the Fee to Support Waste Management Program. The programs that could look like hiring someone to administer and collect the fee. It could look like supporting waste reduction education efforts like the ones that your Sustainability Board has ongoing in primary schools. So you could supplement and expand that and providing reusable bags. As Lilly mentioned, equity is a central concern that we've heard you all prioritize throughout this process. And there are three key components of the ordinance and its implementation that can ensure it's equitable for residents. One, the most important one I'd like to highlight, is creating exceptions for low-wealth individuals. So having an exception for people who are on SNAP, WIC, or receiving Medicaid, where this 10-cent fee would impose a significant burden when household budgets are already stretched. Another would be outreach and education, making sure it's culturally sensitive and accessible so these populations are aware that they have exemptions, they know how to ask for them, and residents require less education for that and providing support for boomerang bags.
Yeah, so that leads me into the next section, which is about business outreach, which again, we have noticed has been kind of a question surrounding this ordinance throughout the inception of the proposal. One thing that we do want to note is the clinic has conducted outreach in the past years since this ordinance kind of began. And what we've found is that 80% of businesses that were given this questionnaire either had a positive or neutral reaction towards the ordinance, which kind of goes to show that it may not be such a large change for people as could be thought of without speaking with them. We've done research also into other locations that have put into place similar ordinances and those have also ended up being quite positive, to the extent where people have been surprised that it works out nicely. And something else that we kind of wanted to get into with this is that depending on what our future research shows with our communications with businesses and what it kind of seems like their reaction would be into different aspects of this ordinance, it's important to note that you do retain a lot of flexibility in how you'd like this ordinance to play out. So it's kind of a way to make sure that you feel like you have options in terms of making sure business owners are still happy and that the community is still happy, but it gives you that flexibility and agency in doing so.
Thank you, Lilly. And we're continuing that ongoing research and outreach. We have heard from Councilmember Williams that you'd really like a better understanding of what implementation looks like for businesses. We're in the process of reaching out to businesses in other cities with a similar ordinance right now, but we haven't been able to contact very many just yet. And so we're very excited to supply you with more information as soon as we have a robust sample for that. We wanted to really close this presentation by thanking you all for leading the way. And considering this ordinance, you're one of the many cities in North Carolina and throughout the South that is leading the way on plastics reduction policy. Just to highlight a few that are also in North Carolina, there's Asheville, which has passed, I want to get this very correct. So in 2020, their council voted for a one-year outreach and education program to talk with their residents about implementing a ban on plastic bags and a fee on paper bags. Their plan is after the close of that year, to vote again on whether to fully implement the ordinance. We see that Boone, North Carolina, is crafting a similar ordinance to the one that Asheville's developing and has a voluntary business incentive program. Wilmington likewise has a voluntary business incentive program and has passed a resolution stating the importance of plastics reduction. And we are also, my apologies, in conversation with residents in Raleigh and Charlotte who are at the start of this process, really looking at policy options and figuring out what will be the best fit for them. And so we're very grateful to have the opportunity to support you all and Don't Waste Durham in leading the way and we're excited to answer any questions you may have. I would like to invite Dr. Nancy Lauer and Michelle Nolan to join us at the podium so we can make sure all of your questions are answered with the full context. Thank you all for your time and your efforts.
Thank you so much. I have a couple more cards from Vine Nguyen and I think Jordan Bethia, as well as Crystal Dreisbach, who signed up to speak online. Are any of those folks interested in speaking at this time?
So, good afternoon, Mayor O'Neill and Honorable Members of the Council. My name is Vine Nguyen and I am a graduate student in the Department of Environmental, Earth, and Geospatial Sciences at North Carolina Central University. It is an honor and a privilege to speak to you all today. I am here also to provide some suggestions regarding the plastic bag fee. I support and having a plastic bag fee in Durham for it encourages people to use reusable bags and be less dependent on plastic bags. This will lessen the amount of plastics in the environment. According to the U.S. Census Bureau, in 2020, 13.9% of the population lived in Durham live in poverty. While some may feel that this fee will hurt underprivileged members even more, I encourage everyone to see that this fee is a part of a larger movement. To ensure that this fee does not burden those members, I have some suggestions on making these, excuse me, to ensure that this fee does not burden those members, I have some ideas on making instructions for making reusable bags accessible to all. There are internet videos that show users how to make reusable bags out of old clothes and fabrics. In addition to these videos, having a step-by-step guide with photos will allow users to create their own bags at home. These videos and guides can be housed under the Connect and Engage tab in the City of Durham website. Also, public libraries can also distribute arts and craft bags to family with the basic materials needed to make reusable bags and a copy of the step-by-step guide. Durham can also host community events that allow members to learn how to make their own bags and/or pick up donated reusable bags. The final way to make reusable bags accessible involves education. In the fifth grade, I learned how to sew a pillow in art class. Young students can do the same in elementary and middle school, which will teach them the valuable skill of sewing and making reusable bags at home. At NCCU, students must complete 120 community service hours to graduate. Some K-12 students need community service hours for certain clubs or honor society. I believe that schools can host events where students can make reusable bags in exchange for community service hours. This plastic bag fee is a big step in environmental preservation. It forces consumers to rely less on plastic bags and more on reusable bags, which will lessen the amount of plastic bags that ultimately ends up in landfills and waterways. In addition, the profits generated from this fee will be given back to the communities through donations. To ensure that everyone is equally affected by this fee, the City of Durham can host events or make instructions on making reusable bags accessible for everyone. Also encouraging schools to participate in outreach programs that make reusable bags will allow more bags to be donated to local businesses and distribute to community members who need them the most. Thank you for your time and let's come together to reduce plastic bags in Durham.
Thank you. Is Jordan Bethia present? Okay. Great, so that can, and the online speaker is also not here. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for checking on that. Questions or comments from members of the council? Mayor Protam and then the mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for this presentation, excited about the implications environmentally that it'll have. Quick comment and then maybe one or two quick questions. First off, just from a cultural competency point of view, I've had a number of constituents talk to me about this and I've talked with colleagues from around the country about this type of ordinance. For many Black folk, these ain't single-use bags. In a lot of Black folks' homes, they got a whole bunch of these bags and they'll put one on the knob, either of the pantry, and that'll be like your recycling bag or your trash. I had one lady say, "I don't ever, I've never bought garbage bags because those are my garbage bags and my lunch bags as well." So for a lot of folk, they're not single-use. They repurpose them every day. I do want to ask about the, and I appreciate the focus on equity, but the practical application for where to pass this ordinance. I'm excited about the possible exemptions for SNAP, WIC, and Medicaid. But operationally, would these folk identify, how would they identify themselves? If they're, a lot of these folk do their big shopping trip at one time, when money hits their EBT card, they'll go and get all their groceries at one time. But other trips that may not be their main grocery trip, are they going to be required to show certification that they're on SNAP or WIC? How would that work?
So this is kind of, this differs depending on the city. Different cities have implemented ordinances in ways where some don't require any certification at all, they take you at face value. So if you say that you qualify, then you qualify. So it's kind of up to Durham in terms of how you'd like to make that implementation.
Okay, that's helpful. And there are some low-wealth individuals who are priced out of assistance, but they're still, you know, they still struggle. They're not, they're not middle-income folk. Would SNAP, WIC, and Medicaid be the only threshold kind of metrics for, or do you know how the cities are handling low-wealth folk who aren't necessarily receiving assistance?
I think I can take a stab at answering this unless, so that is something that is, again, this is an area to highlight where you all can decide what you feel would be the best opportunity. I would like to highlight, you can also address that through supporting boomerang bags and so beefing up that program so low-wealth individuals have access to reusable bags free of charge. We know, we've done some research into other cities and they have chosen to supply reusable bags specifically to members of the population who either get the exemptions or might be lower wealth in order to alleviate that. And so, making it possible so people don't even really need to rely on the plastic bags anymore. But that is something that we can add to our research questions as we continue to explore further implementation and I appreciate your highlighting that.
No, thank you much. I appreciate y'all being here. Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. Our mayor's next and then Councilmember Kabir.
Thank you all for being here. I always like to see young, bright legal minds in this area. You are both a law students, I think. Are you not?
I'm a law student.
Law students. Instructor.
Master of Environmental Management student who really likes law.
So I am all for trying to figure out what we do in, when we reuse plastic bottles, just all of it. But I just have a question on the equity issue because most people who can afford, you know, they're going to pay the dime. They're going to pay the dime, who can afford it. And so how do you, how is that equitable? How do you define equity? Because it's going to be your poor people who will think twice before they spend that dime. But most people, it will just, for a lot of people, it's just a dime. So how do you balance that? How are you all, how am I to rationalize that when I go? And it's like Mayor Protam said, I have a lot of plastic, but I have that same scenario right at home. They're sitting right in my trash cans. I do use them as my trash bags along towed lunch. I did it today. So they are not single-use by no means in my household. But I do recognize that, you know, I too have a certain amount of privilege. And so if you say you're going to, and I go to the grocery store and I have, I can't, I don't want to tote 20 cloth bags. So my option would be, if I know I'm going to go in there and buy, you know, 10 bags of groceries, I don't know if I'm going to worry about the 10 cents per bag versus me having to tote 10 bags around in my car. But that's an option I have because of the income, not from the city, mind you. Not from that, that I looked at today. But anyhow, so, yeah. Mm-hmm. Don't anyone tell me what that chick looked like as I was sitting here looking at it? Okay, but anyhow, anyhow, you know, so how do you make that equitable? Because for some of us, you know, you pay the dime and it's the poor people who will then not, it won't be equitable for them. So talk me through that.
So I think that this is somewhere again where there's flexibility in how the implementation of the ordinance ends up going through. And so you can end up making those decisions about what's the threshold you want for like, who are the people who will end up being the ones to pay for it. To kind of go back into the equity, I think this is something where, and we sped through this aspect of the presentation, but the issue is that a lot of these inequities exist already. So these same communities who are the poorest communities are also communities who are living near fracking infrastructure, refinery infrastructure, that's causing a lot of air pollution, other health crises for the most part. So it's kind of something where this starts not just from the bags itself, but just the entire plastic bag production. And so I think what this ordinance seeks to achieve on some level is it's kind of a shift in what that consumption's going to look like. And so that's how you kind of ameliorate the problem is from the beginning and creating less bags ends up helping with that also.
If I may jump in, I'd also love to reference this question to Dr. Lauer and Professor Nolan because they were there and doing a lot of that initial research about how this fee does generate an incentive for behavior change. And so while it may be small, it does have an impact. Would either of you like to comment on that?
Thank you very much and thanks to Lilly and Kat for presenting this for our clinic and for Don't Waste Durham. So in terms of equity, as Lilly said, you know, the way we view this is that it's a problem from cradle to grave. And the assessments that we've done throughout the city show that low-wealth communities are most burdened by litter. They're the ones who are most exposed to the problems associated with disposal of plastics, you know, the Sampson County community that receives all of Durham's waste. And what we're also seeing in terms of the litter cleanups that we've been doing in association with other community groups is that upward of 40% of the litter that we're collecting are, is composed of plastic film from the degradation of these bags. And so, you know, in that regard, this is a problem in equity in how we distribute different burdens throughout our community from, you know, cradle to grave in the plastic production and disposal process. In terms of the fee itself, what we are hoping for is that people will, that the 10-cent fee sends a signal to someone that this isn't something that is free, that is unburdening to the community, but that, you know, it has a cost associated with it. And so what we're trying to do is suggest a policy that reflects that cost to society so that people are more mindful of the decisions that they make in accepting one of these disposable bags. And I should say, just as an editorial comment, single use is how it's designed, not necessarily I use them too for many things, including picking up after my dog. So we understand that they have multiple uses. It's just that they're designed as disposable and single-use bags in any event. So people who are not able to afford the fee would be able to just say, "I qualify for an exemption." And the specific exemptions we've taken are modeled off of policies that are implemented in other parts of the country. But that could be expanded to think about people who are receiving some form of housing assistance, for example. And by not requiring somebody to show proof, you know, show their Medicaid card, show their SNAP or their EBT card, that would preserve a measure of dignity, they would still have to say, "I qualify for an exemption." And as part of the education and outreach that we would do with businesses, we would instruct people not to ask for proof, but just to take somebody's word on it. And so that- And so that way, if there were people who, you know, for whom the policy would still be a burden, they didn't qualify for whatever reason because of documentation status or, you know, they're just over the income levels, they would still be able to take, avail themselves of that exemption for the bags that they need. I hope that addresses your concerns.
Thank you. Councilmember Cabirro, and then Mayor Protim.
Thank you. Thank you for coming today. I know you all have been working on this ordinance for quite some time. I remember when you came to Environmental Affairs Board several years ago now. And I just want to say that however we implement it or whatever conversation we have, I do hope we move forward as a council. I find it interesting, in Chile, they have banned all plastic bags and straws. There was no, they don't care what wealth, there are plenty of countries all over the world that are incidentally less affluent than the United States, and communities that their low-wealth individuals are at a level that are way lower than we really think about in the United States. So I think that there are ways to do this that isn't too burdensome. It's been done in many, many places. I think if we think about littering, forest fires, we have lots of really great cultural advocacy campaigns that we can think of, that we grew up around. And I think that if we move forward, and I hope we do, that we can think about how do we create something that is like very Durham-specific or contextual so that we can work towards, so we're not just, oh, one day, we're going to put in this fee. And there wasn't a large campaign of education advocacy. I think the city does a really good job if we look at how we have used water over time. Even though our population has increased, our water consumption hasn't, and it's because of a lot of the messaging that the city's done and a lot of the policies that the city's implemented. And so we have excelled at that. So I think we have pretty good track record of how to do this, and I think it's necessary. And we're all going to have to make these kinds of decisions if we want a world that's very different, especially when I think about plastic use. And I'm certainly guilty of, you know, I have a bag with a bag and another bag of plastic, and I use it for all kinds of things. But I also have been using cloth bags for a long time, so I think there is a lot of opportunity. I know that in schools where they have switched to kids teaching them how to compost, so they could compost their, yeah, there was absolutely a lot of training, but if they could get kindergartners to compost all their stuff, I think we can get some residents to start thinking differently about their plastic use.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. Professor, I just wanted to respectfully say, we know they're not designed for single use. Part of the genius of our people has been having, call them coping skills, having, in the Jazz tradition, having to use something for multiple purposes. Pliers aren't meant to turn the TV, and hangers aren't meant to be antenna for TV as well, but it happens sometimes. I do also want to say, from a cultural competency point of view, the, because I want to be careful about conflations. Historically, the location of industrial-level fracking or whatever entities placed in minority communities or poor communities was not predicated upon the buying habits of poor people. Those were systemic decisions, oftentimes to keep them out of the neighborhoods of the other folk who were using plastic bags regularly. So I just want to make sure that, when we talk about the benefits of this, that, you know, folk from McDougal Terrace, because they're paying 10 cent, you know, for a plastic bag, that that somehow is going to, you know, manifest itself in better decisions from powerful people far removed from their context where they place these type of facilities. You know, we're talking about here as a council, everyday folk who are complaining about the price of eggs, and now I have to pay, you know, extra for the bag to put them in. So I just want to just be very careful about how we frame issues when we talk about equity and culture as well. Thank you, Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Councilmember Hyman's our next speaker.
Hi, how are you? Thank you so much. I know you have been working on this a long time, even prior to me being on the city council, and then I had the opportunity to meet with you. I also just want to piggyback on what Mayor Protim said. Even with the structure of you saying that someone would have to identify that they basically eligible, it was, we still have to be specific, you know, kind of, I guess, look at that too, because that is a level of someone having to disclose. And so, you know, I remember, you know, being a little kid, we used to have the food stamps in the packages, right? And then it went to swiping. And so everybody doesn't really know what you're paying when you're swiping, because you could be swiping with a MasterCard. So I just want us to be conscious of that too, because even though we're saying they still would have to self-identify, that still is a level of self-identifying, you know, what their, I guess, income level is. So I would just be a little conscious when you're kind of working on how you're going to do that. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Other questions or comments? Councilmember Williams.
Yep, thank you. So I have, let me start off by saying, I've been working on this as well with a few folks and talking with you all. And I will, you know, this is no surprise. I do think that this should move forward, but I do think we're a little premature before it being an actual ordinance. One, I think there needs to be more outreach, because it's really easy to say, we're just, we're going to add a 10 cents. And 10 cents is just a dime. It's really small. I think for me, it's more the psychology of it. Also, another point is, and colleagues, I'm just speaking out the points that I've made to them already. The other side of it is, you know, I think that we will have more impact with the robust education campaign rather than a coerced fee. When the pandemic was here and we had to police, and we can talk about it theoretically, I'm speaking from a practitioner point of view. In my restaurant, trying to police people wearing masks when they came in was hell. It was a lot. You know, now policing, who's going to pay 10 cents or not? Asking my staff to decipher whether, hey, are you on SNAP or not, you know, or, you know, or wanting someone to be in an uncomfortable situation to identify themselves. I just think that there are still a lot of practical things that need to be worked out, and I can appreciate the outreach to other cities. And Crystal and I was just texting earlier, and she's going to get me some of that feedback. But also just the feedback here, you know, with the small businesses here in Durham. The other thing is, I do think there's a way forward, but I push a little harder. You know, I would even support, you know, public art, you know, showing people how much litter we actually send to Sampson County. Put it right in Center City. Let's see the big ball of trash that we're sending out there. But people need to see this. Right now, this is a matter of Food Line versus Trader Joe's. You know, it's like you have folks that are Whole Foods. You know, it's like, there is a demographic that has this as a practicing culture, and then there are some that, you know, look, give me my plastic bag. I need plastic rather than paper because I have to walk home, you know. So I can appreciate the sensitivity to equity, but I think the biggest issue here is more so just, you know, how do we practically make this happen? And when you speak to some of the businesses locally, you may go upon a restaurant called Zwilli's, where we do not offer you straws anymore. You have to request it, you know? You're going to drink your water, if you're in-house, you're going to drink an in-house glass, not a plastic cup, you know? And I think those are some of the small things that we do, we can do locally. But I do ultimately believe this is something that the federal government needs to get involved in as well. Because I can tell you, 1,000 plastic-to-go bags cost $17 at Sam's Club. When I buy a bushel of 100 paper bags, it's going to cost me about $150. So that is a, that's a supply issue. Those are organizations, right now, we're looking at enforcing, you know, this 10-cent fee on a use of, single-use bag. But Sam's Club get to still sell the plastic bags, you know? So it's like healthy food costs more. So who's going to be at that, you know, that sacrifice? So those are the things that I think need to still be hashed out. As I said before, I will be your biggest champion, and I will continue to work with you all on this. I do think it's premature for it to be an actual ordinance. Let's work those kinks out. Let's bolster up the education campaign and bring it forth.
If I may respond? That's okay, right? Okay, cool. Yes, go ahead. Sorry. Please respond. I think you highlighted a lot of really valuable points, everyone who just spoke. And certainly a lot of really important and valuable considerations for the education campaign. Something we weren't able to go into is, one of our key recommendations is that there is this education campaign that's comprehensive, clear, accessible, and that it goes on for a while before this is implemented. In terms of the federal government ultimately moving on it, as an environmental student, I'm like, yes, please. That's like what we dream about. And I think in the case of this ordinance, cities and counties and states moving forward on this is one way of building that momentum towards eventually getting the federal government to go, okay, cool, we can do this, and we won't receive as much pushback as we want or as we would expect. And then in terms of the outreach or other policies having an impact, we, when we were doing our policy analysis, we did find that you can do voluntary campaigns, you know, that are encouraging people to change their behavior, and those are actually less effective than a fee because you don't have that concrete cost of, you know, it's not just weighing kind of my moral values, how close is this issue to me? You're really weighing the, okay, like, I know there's an immediate cost, and I know that I can avoid it. And so even though someone may be very privileged and be able to afford those bags, and that's important to account for, they may decide, you know, but I don't have to pay an extra amount. Why would I pay an extra amount for a bag when I could bring my own, or I could not use a bag, or I don't really need one in my house right now? And so those are some of the reasons why these fees have been effective in communities in changing the behavior of members of the population on a broad spectrum, and not just the behaviors of people who are in those lower-income communities who will be inherently more affected by that.
Yep. So what I'll say is, I am going to, I'll support a robust education campaign with a resolution before we move to an ordinance. That's me personally.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Cabirro, and I've got some thoughts about myself on the snack.
Thank you. Just really quickly, I would support an education campaign with an ordinance so that we have a clear timeline. So 12 months, 18 months, whatever we decide. But I do actually feel, I mean, we tax things that we don't want in our society for a reason sometimes, right? And so I understand that that's often not popular, but I do actually think that if we want, we have to change our behaviors. When I think about environmental issues, it's both collective and individual. It is a combination of both to see a different future. And so part of it is going to be, you know, I'll be happy to be the dork who goes to, you know, does a video and is like, "Don't forget your bag." You know, I'll do it in Spanish and English. And I did it when I had to wear a mask too, Spanish and English. And so I do hope that we, I know this conversation may continue on council, but I do actually feel like we need to rise to the occasion of where we are in this moment, and this moment, you know, we're in crisis. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I've got a couple thoughts on how we can move this forward. I think it would be great to get some analysis of the proposal from our staff and from our city attorney with regard to the, some of the implementation questions and legal questions, if y'all would be, if we could send that along and have staff take a look at it before we move it forward. And I also think it would be great to have a subcommittee of council, again, continue to work on some of the questions that have been brought up around equity and around implementation. So if there are colleagues who would be interested in doing that, Councilmember Hyman says she would be interested in being on a subcommittee. Anyone else?
I'm working directly with them on some of this, so I'm not going to overcommit.
Is that a yes? That's a no. Anyone else would like to be on a subcommittee? We can't make it unless we have...
Like, we will meet with them individually, so I guess...
Right. I think we need to talk to each other as well.
All right, I'll get on it.
Okay, great. So we've got Councilmember Hyman, Councilmember Williams, and Councilmember Cabirro on a subcommittee. And I'll defer to our staff for thoughts on what a staff analysis might be able to add to the conversation.
So you would like to, you all want to form a subcommittee? Who is that formally now?
Councilmember Hyman, Councilmember Williams, and Councilmember Cabirro have volunteered to be on a subcommittee.
All right. Thank you.
Great. And yeah, if there, if our staff has any comments, we'd be excited to hear them. Otherwise, I think we're done.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you. We had a great presentation, great presentations, great meetings. However, we are coming now to the closings because we have to go into closed session. So at this point, we'll turn to our clerk to hear about our voice and commission.
Good evening, everybody. I have a few nominations here. The Durham Homeless Services Advisory Committee for the category of corporate private sector is Humphrey Truitt. Durham Performing Arts Center Oversight Committee, category of arts and culture, Philip H. Kearney. For the category of facility management, Amit K. Singh. Durham Performing Arts Center Oversight Committee, mayoral appointment, Finesse G. Coach. Mayor's Hispanic-Latino Committee Appointment, Jose E. Guerrero. And the Citizens Advisory Committee Appointment, Sherrod Johnson. And that's the end of my report.
All right. Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. I'll turn now to our city manager so that we can settle our agenda.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For consent, I have items 1 through 44 and item 54, GBA, item 55, and GBA Public Hearings, items 48 through 52. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Manager. Is there a motion to settle the agenda?
No move. Second.
Right, it's been moved by Councilwoman Freeman and seconded by Councilwoman Cabirro. All those in favor, if you raise your left hand. That is a unanimous vote. All right, is there also a motion to adjourn to closed session?
Move. Second.
All right, we are now, all those in favor, sign by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, we are in closed session.
Madam Mayor, are we doing upstairs?
We will go upstairs and be up there about five minutes.
Thank you.
About five minutes. It's 5:55. Yeah. Moving on up to the...